Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. March 7th, does everybody had a chance to review them in the amendment?
These were amended, modified of our minutes, right?
That is correct.
That's correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, I would, if there's a motion, I would move that we accept the minutes with the amendments that were handed out a little bit earlier.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We should have seconded that, shouldn't we? What? Okay, second? Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just for the record, can we clarify what those changes were for the public?
Sure, sorry, we might need a, the chair may need another cup of coffee before we start the meeting.
And Ally, if you want to read those out, just some conditions.
Since I wasn't at the meeting, let's have Ally clarify.
So, the minutes were amended because we were originally going to have a fourth condition to satisfy the parking requirements for Fairhope Urology SR 2202. The motion that was made was subject to staff recommendations, clarify all utility easements on private property, screen the transformer pad and coordinate site access with Hoyle Avenue improvements to the north and a right turn only from Hoyle Avenue. So, the parking condition was no longer needed.
Do we have to remove or do we have a motion and a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstained because I wasn't there. Okay. Moving on to the items on our agenda today. The first is UR 2205, the request of point broadband utility review. And Mike is going to...
So, this is the utility review for point broadband. It's approximately 14,500 linear feet of directional bore fiber along South Grino between Nichols and Twin Beach Road on the east side of Grino. You can see that on the map on the screen, the areas in red are the areas that they will be going in to do. Very similar to the utility reviews we've been seeing the last several month. Same conditions apply. These conditions are to memorialize kind of the construction strategies and techniques that need to be used. I'm not going to go through all of those and read them for you, but I do want to emphasize condition number eight is the line locates a 750 max per day. That's numbers not limiting them to 750 feet that they can do work in a day. That's just the amount that our line locates are able to get out and actually locate for them. The line locates, I believe, are good for 20 days, so they just need to, in their schedule, work out to call those ahead of time before they're ready to begin work. So, they can still do 2,000 foot a day if capable and coordinate that with our right-of-way construction inspector. But other than that, the conditions are typical conditions. And staff recommends approval subject to those conditions.
Okay, is there any questions or discussion?
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
I move we approve UR 22.05, subject to staff conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second item on the agenda, SR 2204, request of the applicant for site plan approval of 412 Fairhope Avenue.
Thank you. This is a site plan review. There is later on the agenda a corresponding MOP that will look at the more technical merits for anybody in the room, I know our commissioners know that. So, Casey will be presenting that. That'll look at drainage, utility connections and the like. But for this project, we're at 412 Fairhope Avenue. It's the site shown on the screen. And we've got some images that you'll see that from street view in just a second. This is within the CBD, so it can be built to the property line. No setbacks are required, so the setbacks are met. The building is meeting the 40-foot height restriction of B2 within the central business district. Architectural elevations are shown at the bottom of the screen. The front elevation, I'm sorry, is at the bottom of the screen. Materials are primarily tongue groove siding, steel pipe columns and brackets and glass. Really, the part of the site plan that's in conflict that we need some guidance on is the balcony conflicting with an existing tree, street tree. The building facade is built to the property line. The balcony extends over the property line into the right-of-way, over the sidewalk, which is common in downtown. Staff has reviewed this and recommends the balcony be amended to make room for the tree. So, showing this, there are the first comments back where we can just trim the tree and want to show that. So, on the image to the left, the balcony is shown in a dash line, so the footprint of the balcony and the highlighted area is where the existing street tree is. About as straight on as we can get the shot shows the street tree. So, with the balcony, what we've tried to accomplish here is showing the building as it overlays on the street and to scale. And as you can see here, this is where kind of the evolution of this drawing, where the elevation of the building layered over. And then the red represents the balcony and the corbels that hold that balcony up. As you can see, that tree has to go away, the way it lays out with the current design. Now, the applicant has, in lieu of redesigning the balcony, has submitted two alternatives. Plan A on the left is just moving, removing the tree, replanting a new tree five feet to the east. Staff does not like that option at all. I mean, it just puts that in the next, in front of the next building. We do have a mature tree out there, so that option is not feasible in our opinion. And then actually, Plan B was looking at removing a parking space, putting a planting island on the street. You know, there's a lot of steps through that. That's removing a parking place is a challenge when we already have some parking challenges. So, the staff is still, feels like changing the balcony to accommodate the tree is the right answer. This is in the right-of-way. That's ultimately the approval of the city council's site plan review. So, having a balcony or anything in the right-of-way is an approval of the city council outside of the site plan review and would require a hold harmless agreement. The elevation, or I'm sorry, the floor plans, on the bottom is the second and third floor. The top is the ground floor, which is designed to be one retail space. They do provide two parking spaces for the two residential units behind the building. Of course, landscaping is not required. There is an existing eight-foot, so that meets our zoning ordinance, no fences. Garbage is collected in three rollout cans located at the rear of the building, approved by our Public Works. Like I said, stormwater, erosion, utilities, all of those will be reviewed in the MOP. This also shall meet our City of Fairhope sign ordinance. Staff does recommend approval of case SR 22.04 with the condition that the balcony be resigned to resolve the conflict with the existing street tree. The applicant is represented by S.E. Civil, I believe, and anybody else with you?
Oh, there he is.
Okay. So, Larry Smith with S.E. Civil is here to represent the applicant.
Could you clarify something, Hunter? If the city council has to approve anything in the right-of-way, we would have to make this a conditional, I mean, how do we?
Just like you would with any site plan, you make your recommendation where you see fit as a commission.
Okay.
And by its nature of approving the site plan, it's giving the approval of the balcony, if that's the way you choose to do it. We just know at staff level, we're going to have to have the hold harmless agreement and all of those things signed before they get a building permit.
Okay. I didn't know if there's an extra step for the, anything over the right-of-way.
Question for you, two questions for you. First, how do you, how would you, how would staff recommend they could modify the balcony?
Well, it's cantilever, so, and I'm guessing it would, it would take some engineering, but structurally, just bring, and it's hard to see here, let's see the best. So, if you can, you can see where the doors are and where the balconies kind of go to, almost to the edge of the building. I mean, I think just bringing that in to line up with the doors, you'd have to do it on both sides.
Both sides to make, okay.
To make it look good.
You're just not talking about modifying one side.
But yeah, even...
Well, that's some of the, I mean, that's beyond his, that's an architectural decision, what they do with the other side.
I mean, it can, there's multiple ways you can do this. And that's where I kind of, pointing out what the conflict is, I think is our job designing it. You know, it could be a removal of the balcony. It could be a Juliet balcony that sits at the balcony. You can move the building facade eight-foot in. There's multiple ways to accomplish that goal.
But the two, the two alternatives, A and B in the report, were their recommendations?
Yes. We looked at, we looked at the opportunity to, there are, in angled parking, if you look around, you know, there's some, some cities will do, take angled parking and kind of cut a triangle out of it and make a tree well. And you'd have to make that compact car spacing, but we don't have the depth of parking here to do that. So, that was the first thing we kind of looked at, but when we started measuring everything, we already have tight drive aisles and we don't have the room to just do that. So, I think it would require actually removing the parking space to get that. So, not completely opposed to that, but I think that's a bigger decision than us when it could be what I think is relatively simple.
The second question is, do we have, do we have a precedent for other buildings that have put balconies on them and have trees that were in conflict? And then what happened, if we do?
In my time, we've only had one, and it wasn't just balconies. There was driveways, and that was over on Church Street, on Church and Magnolia. They wound up and went to the tree commission, board of adjustment, had to go through a few loop hoops to get there. But it was a slightly different scenario. Now, you can look at, certainly there's balconies downtown in many locations. I think, Mike, were you here with John's building? And they had to save a tree there. You can see trees, I mean Hampton Inn had it designed around a tree.
Another broken egg.
Another broken egg, yes, that was altered to protect, to save an existing tree. So, I don't, certainly there are awnings and balconies within our right-of-way in many locations.
And let's keep it to just questions so we can hear from the developer and then discuss. Because I'm sure there's lots of things that we want to discuss.
That's fine, but I'd like to hear staff's attitude about it before we get to the developer.
Yeah.
Okay. Mike.
If y'all have questions for Larry, he's here.
Larry, would you like to speak?
Yes. Larry Smith, S.E. Civil. As Hunter was saying, we had several conversations with different staff members and different people involved with this process and tried to come up with a solution. You know, trimming the balconies, it's not a large balcony already. Trimming it down would change the front field because if you go back to the, all those are actually operable doors along the front. So, we pull that into, one of them would have to become a non-operable or actually go away to be able to not open those up. So, I'd prefer the condition be worded that we can work with staff and work with the arborist and the right-of-way department. And it might end up back there, we have to trim the balcony. It's ultimately a city council decision, it sounds like. So, I just don't want to be locked into an approval that says it's got to be this. And then we do come to some type of resolution, whether it be several trees throughout the city or some other alternative, that might be amenable to the city. I mean, we understand that the desire to keep the tree, and we just want to be able to keep that avenue and that communication open at this point and come to the city council and hopefully have a decision made. And if y'all have any other questions for me?
Nope.
Thank you.
We may end up having more questions, well, we have a public hearing to meet, or no, we don't, okay, we can just discuss. When you look at where, I mean, if we want to have street trees downtown, they've got to go somewhere. And it's located in about the best location, you know, there are other places where there's street trees right dead in front of a lot, like right in front of the entrance. And this one, just like the one at Honey Baked Ham, is just right on that property line. It seems like just about the best place for the street tree to be. I mean, I think that was a good question about what our precedents are. I just, my concern is if everybody wants to cover the whole sidewalk, we're not going to have any street trees downtown unless we decide we can get rid of a whole lot of parking.
Well, that's not, that's not, not mincing words, but that's not a precedent. Precedent is what's happened in the past.
No, I appreciate you asking about that.
And so, if we've done it one way before, then certainly you don't do for one, you're not willing to do for another. That was the reason for the question.
Yeah.
I happen to feel like maybe we would be, it would be appropriate to, as long as staff and the arborists were in agreement, that they could work with, we'd let the, let the folks work with them until they figure it out. And if it ends up being to have to snug the balcony in, so be it.
Well, and I think the recommendation we made, it's kind of why we made it the way we did, that's our opinion. Planning commission has an opinion. I don't think you have to rewrite the condition. It is a recommendation to the city council.
Yeah.
They can make the decision to work with whoever and make that decision. And if the condition changes, they can do that. So, you know, I think you do what your conscience tells you to do on that back condition.
I would just...
I just, and I want to say, and the two solutions that have been proposed, they don't really solve the problem, they just make it somebody else's, is what it amounts to.
And I will say, I think there's a, you know, in the comp plan and what you can do downtown, y'all, y'all been through a lot of those conversations. There is looking at downtown, seeing where maybe we could gain some parking, concentrated parking in some areas, maybe remove some parking spaces here and there to provide a healthier, more growing space for some of the trees. We're not there, but it could be something that would be feasible. I don't know if this location would be that opportune, but most of the conversation has been more toward intersections of doing that, and you can maybe have some sitting areas and things like that. So, exploration of that option is not something we're against, just right now with what we see. You know, it seems to be the easier solution is changing the building.
Yeah, and I would be hesitant, I mean, I think the recommendation as written makes sense to me. I'd be hesitant to leave something more open that, where it's planting some trees somewhere else, because I think, I don't want, I wouldn't want us to create that precedent that we're amenable to every building using the city right-of-way. Because the sidewalk's not their land, they're, you know, they're asking to use public space, which is, which is fine, but if the goal is to have street trees downtown, there's got to be some give and take. And I could see, you know, I'm overstepping, but I could see, you know, two Juliet balconies and one coming out, you know, you don't have to get rid of those. You don't necessarily have to get rid of the doors or the operability. You could, you could pull some balconies in and poke some out. I think there's, they have a way to have a good project and still have not, you know, still have street trees downtown. I want to, I'm not saying this against this project, but I just want to say a tribute to, you know, just to recognize this, sad to see this historic building go away. I understand why it's going away. You know, we were involved with several designs trying to keep it that weren't ever able to work because it's in such bad shape. But it was the first African-American owned business downtown. It was the home of a barber, and I believe there was a doctor's office above, sort of barber hospital. So, it's a neat old building, and I'm sorry to see it go. This looks like a beautiful project, but I wanted to note what is there before we move on. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any comments or discussion?
Did you have something?
Oh, sorry, Larry?
I did, one more question, when Hunter was talking about the spacing of the trees and, you know, the ability to grow.
Yeah.
And that was a question that we had internally as to, I mean, I remember, golly, I forget how long ago, it was back when Jennifer Fiddler, and they actually replaced all these trees and planted these trees. And so, is there a process when that happens, when the trees get replaced because they don't have room to keep growing? I think this one's probably about two feet off the back of curb right now.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, if there is a process to where these, within the city, and I don't know the answer, and that's one of the questions we have for the arborist, is, is there a plan as to when they have to replace these trees because they've outgrown the space that they have? And if there is, then I'd hate to, you know, conform a design around a tree that's going to be replaced. And then the other thing, just the sentimental thing, as you mentioned, you probably remember that was my first office in downtown Fairhope.
That's right.
So, it's sad, but it's going to be a beautiful building, I'm sure, but it was my first office too.
Can you speak to that?
Yes, we have talked about that. There's no plans to remove that tree in the immediate future or anything like that.
Wasn't that first removal mostly because there are Bradford pears that fall apart? Or was it an aging out?
I know we had some water oaks, maybe the, before my time, there was another.
There weren't any water oaks. They're horrible.
Well, Bradford pears are much better.
On section that was most recently removed, but there was some of, I think there were oats.
Laurel?
Where are you talking about? You're talking about the...
One more section, you know, the...
North.
What, those?
Pot scams, which is for the pot scams, just in the last year.
Yeah, those weren't oats.
But...
Anyway, that, okay.
City never planted any water oaks. They don't last long.
And Hunter had mentioned as part of the comprehensive plan, or there might be one thing that would be helpful for downtown is if we start to locate ideal locations for all the street trees and standardize it to help with future development.
Well, and I do think, you know, anybody that's at the council meeting, Eric Polk, he's a building official, gave a presentation of both him, I, John Thomas, Richard Johnson have been working on, to have right-of-way standards. And within that, we noted that it's good to have a street tree planted. And, you know, balconies, awnings, things like that can't conflict with those. But we need that plan where people see it, you know, where, not only where we have them today, but where we might want them in the future to have that streetscape. So, something that's on our radar.
Okay.
Do we have a question?
You ready?
Yes.
I'm really rereading the recommendation from staff. I don't know that. Case SR 2204, 412 Fairhope Avenue, move that we approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Hunter will bring up ZC 2203, the public hearing to consider the request of the planning and zoning department for amendment to Article 3. I won't go into the section table of the zoning ordinance.
So, this is a pretty simple, we've discussed this before. It just changes the use table. It adds, you know, we have the black dots and the white circles. And black dots in our use table means it's a use by right. The white circles, in effect, mean they have to go get approval and are subject to special conditions. So, in words, basically what this proposed amendment is doing is allowing a bed and breakfast to be permitted by appeal to the board of adjustment in B3B. Currently, a bed and breakfast is not allowed at all. So, which doesn't make sense. A lot of that is right on Fairhope Avenue between the CBD and the Bay, a lot of the historic buildings there. And the other two changes right now, the hotel is allowed in B3B and B3A by right. So, this is the existing table, hotel and motel, B3A and B3B, and then a bed and breakfast by right in B3A. This is what we would propose to change the use table to, to allow hotel, hotel is, even in the CBD, is an allowed use subject to, or on appeal, subject to special conditions. It makes sense that it is in other areas as well, especially closer to residential areas. So, that's the proposed change. And then allowing a bed and breakfast as an alternative in B3, in B3B. So, that's the, that's the gist of this amendment. It's very small, but obviously staff recommends approval of this. This would be a recommendation to the city council, and this is a public hearing. Any questions?
Nope.
No, do we have a zoning map in the, if we don't, it's okay. I was just thinking, if there were any questions in the public hearing, that would help clarify.
We can pull one up. Joe, can you get to the website? Is that?
Do you need it?
No, no, I'm sorry.
If we need it, we can, if you have any questions.
Okay, so we'd like to open the public hearing. Would anybody present like to speak to this matter? Okay, I guess everybody's here for the next items on the agenda. We'll close the public hearing. I think it's, I think it's great to have the alternative to bed and breakfast and to put a little more scrutiny on hotels. Does anyone have any questions for Hunter or other staff?
Did you close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we recommend the city council approve ZC 22.03, the zoning.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't have to say any opposed when I can see everybody, I guess.
You got a minute?
Yeah. Motion passes. Or the request passes. The next item on the agenda, ST 2203, the public hearing to consider the request of S.E. Civil on behalf of the owner for preliminary plat approval of Skyline Village, 114-unit MOP.
Thank you. So, this subject property is, he said, 114-unit MOP. That MOP process is review procedures under our subdivision regulations. This is not intended as a land, as a subdivision of land, but they are adding more than three units, and it triggers a process very similar to a preliminary plat. This is within Fairhope's planning jurisdiction, but outside the city limits where the zoning ordinance does not apply. Subject property is 16, approximately 16 and a half acres. This project was also reviewed by Baldwin County Highway Department and Planning Department and did receive approval from them. It does not go to their planning commission, so it's not a double jeopardy when there's, with the new laws, they have review procedures as well, but only goes to one planning commission. So, lucky you. So, the subject property is here. As you see on the left, it is unzoned. The aerial on the right shows the, roughly the current conditions of the property. The aerial is a little bit, you know, a few years old, like this was in 2021, but roughly the existing conditions of the site today. The proposed site plan is on the screen here. It is townhomes intended as rentals, so by, by the nature, it is apartments, rental townhomes. They are not intended to be condominiumized, sold individually. It will be owned and managed by one company as rental units. There was a lot of questions, a lot of comments. I want everybody to know that if they called, if they sent any comments, we forwarded those on to the planning commission, and you did hear, everyone did get the comments to the commissioners. But drainage was one of those things that was really looked at, and, you know, there's a lot of critique on almost all projects. And I think that no one would doubt that there's some drainage issues on adjacent properties. And we've said many times, it's not always the responsibility of a new development to fix those problems. But what I will acknowledge here, and I want everybody to understand this because there was a lot of questions on, is it going to fix, is it going to make it worse? Our regulations by the design engineers, calculations, our regulations require 46,000 approximately cubic feet of storage. They're providing 204,000. That's over four times the amount of storage than we require by our subdivision regulations. That's looking at the flow rates of all site, you know, if you see that pre and post... You know, if you see that pre and post, pre says what it is today. Post, after the development, it's lower in every line on there. So I think in general, while I'm not an engineer, it might not fix every drainage problem off-site, but it's certainly helping the situation, in my opinion. And we did send this off for a third-party review as well. Green space was amended a few times. So this project has a net density of 8.99 units per acre, which does require 25% green space. The latest revisions did consolidate acreage into green space that's contiguous to one another and does meet the three acres of parkland. And then their amenities were provided, including playgrounds, clubhouse, pool. Butterfly garden and a dog park was not counting the space between the buildings and kind of remnant spots. So, and 30% for the pond. Do want to call out here, you'll get to a condition, I just want to show what's happening. There is a sidewalk provided on Dire and Bishop Road, but it cuts across the private property. There is a condition later on about an easement for the public access easement through that, but the city will not be maintaining that since it is on private property. Being right there on the slope of the pond, that'll have to be maintained by the owner and must meet those state ADA regulations and keep that in a good use since it does connect the two public sidewalks. Landscaping was amended. They did provide, I think since commission seen this last, and I will touch just for commissioner's sakes, we originally saw this as a PUD request, or a similar project, a different applicant, but saw this as a PUD request. The comments then were, you know, meet the townhome guidelines, and we're looking at buildings and how they lay out, crenelations with the buildings and things like that. This application is not. That applicant chose not to pursue the PUD. This is just under our subdivision regulations, which, as I mentioned before, the subdivision, the zoning ordinance does not apply. And with the change in some of our laws, things like tree ordinance, some of those things don't apply as well. The applicant did provide perimeter trees and trees around the green space area, provided more detailed landscape at the entrances. I do think, and this is just kind of commented the last minute, I do think some shrubbery and things like that understory could really help between the buildings. But that's not a requirement. So a little bit more of a master plan on the amenities was provided this month in your packet. They're labeled on the plan here, and some of those amenities are shown on this screen. The access drive, one of our critiques, I know we, this one, you got packets last month, but we didn't get a chance to talk about it in the meeting. So one of the issues we had on a private drive, can't do, we don't allow private roads, but we have private access loops, if you will, in some projects. But when you do kind of a light and block with a private road, that becomes a problem. So the listment test we looked at there was nine-on-one. If they're addressing buildings off multiple roads, well, that's just kind of skirting the light and block, private road conundrum. So all buildings were lined off the central loop. Nine-on-one did approve that plan, and everything will be addressed off of Skyline Drive, which is a private access drive. Wetlands delineation was completed by Craig Martin with Wetland Sciences. In his opinion, the site is entirely comprised of I-Plans, comprehensive plan. We do look at this and kind of what the distance from a node, and this did fall outside of that. That node and what we're looking for, and understand that half mile is not in our comprehensive plan. It's just a good planning principle. It's a walking shed, if you will. So, but really, then you look at, comprehensive plan's a guiding document, but you also look at precedent and what's there. So within that same half a mile, we have two, three other projects that are R5 density. We have apartments, PUD, and apartments, we've got R4, R3, all within that same area. So I did not feel that, and some of those are, R5, where you see those, and the PUD adjacent to Grino are all 10 units per acre. This being nine, did not feel like this, while might not have met the strictest goals of the comprehensive plan, we've got a precedent here in this area of what has been approved. And I didn't feel like comprehensive plan was a reason to deny this. Utilities, I'm going to go through some of these because there's a lot of conversations went on with utility. Water within the site will be private and master metered. Our utilities will extend the water to the site at the developer's expense. One of the issues we're having with all of the influx and rising cost of development is materials. So an estimate of aid to construction was provided, but will be recalculated at the time of building permit if approved and will be revised to reflect cost of the time. System development charges were amended, and that's by the city council, and not included in the aid to construction estimates. Those will be included as well at time of permit. Sewer will gravity feed to a list station east of the property. The sewer within the site will remain private. The Fairhope utilities will, intends to install the off-site sewer main at the developer's expense. Same comment about aid to construction cost. Power is one that is changing daily. A proposed electrical site plan was submitted and is currently being reviewed by the electric superintendent. Final plans, including any aid to constructions or required easements, shall be approved by the electric superintendent, and the developer will install all electric utility infrastructure and provide a meter base. The lead times when we reviewed this in February were 40 to 50 weeks to get pad mount transformers. Today, they are, or last week when it was checked, it's up to 70 to 120 weeks. So I just want to make sure people understand that. Gas is not requested. Communication is AT&amp;T, and garbage will be collected in relup cans by Baldwin County Solid Waste. Now, traffic study, there's, do you have some, if you noticed in your staff report, we do kind of have some questions on the traffic study. The traffic study originally provided and approved by Baldwin County included the three sites for traffic counts, Highway 98 and Dire Road, Dire Road and Bishop, and Bishop and Gafer Road Extension. This included historic traffic counts as well as a projection in the year 2024, with and without the proposed development. The, that analysis included that all intersections will operate at an accessible level of service and auxiliary turn lanes were not warranted. We did, the city of Fairhope did ask for, and this is something actually staff can't require, another location at Fairhope Elementary School, Bishop and Fairhope Avenue, and to look at a different peak hour than our subdivision requires because school hours are slightly different than our peak hours. We require 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. So the school traffic letting out, we thought that was something to do and would ask the planning commissioners to require that. The applicant has went ahead and done that. So they voluntarily supplied that data in the study. Now, there's some questions we have on that, don't necessarily agree with this conclusion, but we don't have the necessary expertise on this. We do have a contract with a third-party engineer to do traffic studies. They happen to be the engineer on this project. So if you so fit, see fit, we can look at what options are available if there's another review. But there's two kind of questions that we have, we'll kind of go over some of those. So the level of service E is where we have problems under our current regulations. D is accessible, E is not. It, D is serviceable, E is not. The study, as it states today, says that the southbound traffic on, at Fairhope and Bishop intersection is a level of service of D, and by 2024 will be failing at an E. At the AM peak, and it's already a level service of E during the PM peak.
What is the level of E during what was this last piece?
During the PM peak, it's already a level service of E. D and moving to a level of service of E by 2024. That, and they do state with or without this development. So, but some of the, and this is where it gets not an expertise, so I'm trying to draw out the, here's where I see a conflict. The growth factor for how they used, what they used to project things out is in the top right on this project. They did a three-year annual growth factor with 2022 being kicked out because it's COVID. I think everybody can look at those numbers and go, well, at our growth, we definitely did not see a reduction. So I think that was smart. So while the math said 0.969% growth rate, they rounded up to 1%. Got to looking around at other traffic studies, and that's a very low, 1% is a very low growth rate. In our comp plan, they projected census is guessing 7%. So if half of those people have cars, we're at an overall 3.5%. But that's looking big picture. So looking at smaller areas, we happen to have a TIS on this project when it was presented as a PUD. That was a different traffic engineer that looked at things a little differently, used counts instead of on Bishop at 98. On the left down there, that was a 3% growth rate. So, but looking at the years used, and these are questions I have. I don't have the answer for this. I do think someone is here to answer these. But looking at the same spot, so this map you see in green is the traffic data from ALDOT. And there are points around here that show data and counts, historical counts. This is the one that was used. So using that same one, I kind of backed up. You can see the counts were the same, I mean, year to year. That's an anomaly. Over, from 16 to 18, there's only two additional counts. That seems like kind of an anomaly. So backing up and using the same years that were in the Baytown, there's a big jump. And if you look at that growth rate, the five-year growth rate, it's 8.5%. That's probably high. But, you know, there's some anomalies here, and I don't know what to do with that information. I don't know, maybe that says, okay, use that high growth rate, and then all of these intersections are failing. But I don't know what the solution is. What is the improvement there? That's not, you know, any expertise I have. So, but we have those questions, and maybe the applicant's representatives are here and can help us understand that a little better. General comments, just want to make sure this project is approved as a single-owned and operated development and shall remain in the future. There's no future subdivisions of the property we foresee in here. The roads are private, utilities are private, and they don't meet public standards. The city of Fairhope's address is incorrect. I don't know if we got that. That's just a note on the E and O insurance. And again, March 25th, staff at the Baldwin County Planning and Zoning did review this and approve it. Condition on the approval of it making through Fairhope's Planning Commission with a favorable decision. We do recommend feedback from the planning commissioners on the traffic study and the new improvements, if required, be added as a condition of approval, but not sure how we get there. With that said, staff did recommend approval of case SD 22.03, Skyline Village MOP, with three conditions excluding the traffic, if there is any. But final utility plans, any required easements, scheduling fees, and aid to constructions costs shall be approved by the respective superintendent before building permit is released for installation of infrastructure. The following note shall be added to the plan for recording. Internal rights of ways, roads, drains, facilities, and utilities outside the required easements are private and will may be maintained by the development owner. The internal rights of ways, roads, private utilities, and drains facilities will not be maintained by the city of Fairhope. And third, a public access easement shall be provided for the sidewalk traversing private property and connected public sidewalks on Bishop Road and Dire Road. It's the one we talked about northeast of the pond. Sidewalks within this easement shall be maintained by the developer owner and shall remain ADA compliant. So if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to. Larry Smith and a few team members are here to represent, with SE Civil are here to represent the applicant, if y'all have any questions.
Any questions for?
There will be a public.
Yes. Any questions for Hunter? The developer would like to speak to this project?
Thank you. A lot of the images you've already seen are going to be shown here. Did want to have a point of clarification. I might just have misheard what Hunter said. But as far as the density goes, I thought he might have said it was nine something. The report said 7.12, I believe, and we're actually down to 6.88 development units per acre because we ended up removing two more units. We were at 116 when he did his original calculation, and we're down to 114. So we're now below seven development units per acre. So with that, just pleased to finally be able to present site plan approval for Skyline Village to y'all. The total site acreage, as mentioned earlier, 16.56 acres with a total number of units now at 114. Since Hunter brought up that PUD that was originally presented to you, I believe we started off at about 150. I think with the PUD, we were down to 134, 138, somewhere like that. And so now it's down to 114. With that, we took a lot of what we heard when we came forward with the PUD, even though it's a different developer, we told them what the concerns were that were brought up at that meeting. A lot of it was dealing with parking. We've added several parking areas on top of providing three parking spaces per unit. Each of their driveways can hold two, and then the garage that, if it's like my house, is full of junk. They still at least have two designated parking spaces plus their garage, and several parking areas around the project for additional parking. We also upgraded the amenities for the facility. You know, we have the pool, we have the butterfly garden, the dog park. Added a playground as well, and then added some additional sidewalks in between the units to allow that green space to actually be used as a green. Originally, we had sidewalks kind of going down the middle of it, which kind of restricted the play area. And so we pushed those sidewalks up closer to the balconies and then opened up the play area and the green space. One other thing that Hunter did a great job explaining is on drainage because all the projects that we've done in this area, the drainage in this area's always been a big concern. And when we had the community meeting, that was one of the main points that were brought up. And on this, as you saw in the chart that he copied and pasted into his presentation, when we get up to the 100-year storm event, we've almost reduced the existing runoff by half. And I could scroll back, actually, I've got the numbers right here. On the 100-year event, we were, existing pre was 125 CFS, and we reduced it down to 65 CFS. So we took what we heard and we tried to implement the best plan we could. I mean, I know there's a lot of people who are going to talk after me and don't want the project, but we did try to listen to the concerns that we had. We also wanted to make sure we had a nice buffer up along Dire Road. As Hunter mentioned, you know, the tree ordinance with the recent rules no longer apply, but we still tried to put a nice buffer along Dire, landscape plannings along Dire Road, and also along the perimeter as well. With that, with these changes that were, did I just get a lot louder? The, with the changes that were made, we ended up at five, just over five acres of total green space. And as you can see in the parking below, you know, parking required, and this is a county requirement, parking required was 236 spaces, and we ended up providing 400 parking spaces between the garages, the two per unit, and the additional parking around the site. So hopefully that will keep people from parking on the streets. I mean, I know somebody will always do it, but we provided ample places for them to park. Some additional information on the townhomes. Some additional information on the, the townhomes, there's two different product types. There's a 28-foot wide and a 24-foot wide. The smallest town home would be 1,210 square feet and the maximum building height would be at 35 feet. These, again, the same amenities you just saw in Hunter's presentation, maybe slightly blown up a little bit more to see. And there's some economic impact data that the developers put together as far as what the city could see as, you know, the economic impact of this development. With that, I'll answer any questions that y'all might have.
Do you have any questions for the developer?
Not yet.
Okay. Thanks, Larry.
All right. Thank you.
We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And I'm not sure if everyone's here for this or for the Battles Trace project, but I would ask that we want to hear what you have to say, but please keep it to about three minutes. State your name and address before you begin speaking. And, and, and if someone has already made, expressed what you want to say, let's try not to repeat. Thank you.
Ken, let me, let me say something just.
Sure.
Okay.
Can we?
One, just a second. One thing, two things, please, for your consideration. First of all, understand, and Hunter Smith, Hunter Simmons said this earlier, whether or not you heard him. Comprehensive plan is not a finite document that you hang your head hat on. It is a guiding principle. Just understand that, that it's not, it's not a concrete plan that you have, you must abide by every word in the document. It's a guiding principle that, that leads a city in terms, in this case, a city in terms of, of what the future will be like. The second thing is, and I think it's real important to understand this, and I know you're in the zone district now, but this particular zone district and this particular property was available for zoning as long ago as 1990. 1990, it was 32 years ago, as other areas around the City of Fairhope and within the county sat back and allowed everything to happen around them without enacting zoning that would enable them to control the future development of their communities. And they didn't do it. And what happens is, this is, this is basically what happens then, is you have no zoning. So the only thing that dictates what's going to happen in this particular case is your subdivision regulations. So I know this is in the zone district now, but it was on the board before the, the district of vote for zoning was approved, which means that it was grandfathered in. So with that being said, I, I would just hope in your comments, you will understand that that's the way that cow eats cabbage. Thank you. I like cows.
Okay. We'll get back to the public. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. My name is Smith Prestwood. I live at 17 South Rolling Oaks Drive. That's at the end of Dyer Road. My office is also a couple blocks up the street here. So I certainly have a vested interest in this and seeing that it's hopefully denied. I want you to know that all the people that are here to speak tonight, against this project have worked very hard to not waste your time. We've had numerous meetings, we've exchanged lots of information, and we're, we've made every effort possible to not repeat each other. I'm going to go through a little bit of history of this project, and if you'll just bear with me for a second, there's a point to that. The original application was filed in March of 2021, and that was the application for annexation into the City of Fairhope with zoning of PUD. Started with 162 townhomes, that was the Baytown PUD. At the May, that was heard at the May 2021 Planning Commission hearing. We submitted a petition objecting to that along with 48 signatures. There was significant opposition at that hearing. I remember most of you were here for that hearing and probably remember quite a few of us speaking at that hearing. And you recall that we were very against the PUD, but not against development and request, and had no problem with it being annexed and zoned R1 or zoned R2. During that hearing, staff recommended denial. There was no decision made. I don't recall what the reason was, but there was no decision made. After that, the project was then sold by that current developer, Stoic Equity Partners, to the current applicant. That's the project was sold, not the land. The next thing that occurred in November 2021, the current applicant that bought that project then bought the land, knowing about the significant public opposition to multifamily development and at that time also knew of the impending zoning referendum, which vote happened later. The application you're looking at now was initially submitted in November of 2021 also. It was incomplete at the time and then resubmitted just hours before the Fairhope City Council instituted the moratorium. We all showed up to the February 7th hearing. Project was tabled at that time, but at that time, staff had recommended the denial. We also submitted a petition objecting to it with 75 signatures. Staff recommended that be denied at that time. And that brings us up to tonight, where it has been resubmitted with minimal changes. We're talking a reduction in four units. The opinion has changed from denial to approval despite minimal changes in the projects. We resubmit our petition tonight, objecting with the 75 signatures. And like I said, each, you'll see a variety of reasons we object, and each one of the speakers is going to cover some different reasons. But I'm just going to touch on the storm water real quick. You'll note in the application that was submitted, there is an analysis of the rate of discharge, but there is no analysis in that application of the total discharge. They're talking about how quickly the water is exiting the property. I'm talking about how much water is exiting the property. There's no analysis of that and there's no analysis of the downstream effects of that. And the reason there's no analysis is because if they had done that analysis, they would have seen that in the two-year rain event, they are increasing the total water discharge by 40%. Now, that's not the rate of discharge, that's the total amount. So we've got more water for longer, longer, which is going to increase the problems. Now, if you look at the back of the packet I gave you, you'll see a report from Kenneth Underwood, who's a professional civil engineer. Many of people are familiar with Mr. Underwood. He was with the Corps of Engineers for years and has been doing storm water reviews for years and years since that. And you'll see that Mr. Underwood did the analysis that they didn't do. And the conclusions of his analysis are on, I believe, the final page of your packet, where you see Mr. Underwood agrees that the rate of discharge is reduced, but the total discharge is increased. Under the two-year event, it's increased 40%. In the five-year event, it's increased 32% and so on. In each and every event, two, five, 10, 25, 50, and 100 years, the total water being discharged off the property is increased. Now, next question, okay. Why does that matter? I'm sorry, I'm trying to hurry because I've realized I'm taking a lot longer than I'd planned on. So in Alabama, we really got two laws on storm water discharge. We have the civil law, what's known as the civil law, and what's known as the common enemy. The common enemy is applied within city jurisdictions. And the way it generally looks at it is that water is a common enemy. You protect yourself, your neighbor downstream protects himself, and that's the end of it. But when you're not in the city limits, such as the property is now, it's subject to a modified version of the civil law. And what that says is that you can collect the water and you can precipitate it at a common point, but you cannot increase the total discharge. And so that, and that's exactly what's happening here, and that's why you don't see that analysis, because the total discharge increases so much. And to bring it full circle, that's why they wanted it annexed into city in the first place, to avoid that law, to get in the city limits, get under the common enemy rule, so they could then dump all that water on the downstream to neighbors. But the annexation was not approved, therefore they're subject to the civil law. They cannot increase that flow on the downstream neighbors. I spoke a lot longer than I meant to, so I'm going to stop.
Guys, please refrain from clapping. Thank you.
I believe Linda Price, and we try to keep this in order, is going to speak next.
Okay. Thank you. Please state your name and, and your address.
Related to. Good afternoon. My name is Linda Price.
Excuse me. Would you pull the microphone down a little bit, please? Thank you.
Sorry, I do have one of those voices, so I will work at this.
And I will say, you guys have been here before, but we will answer questions at the end of every, of the public hearing, so.
That would be fine. I, I really am here to tell a story. My name is Linda Price. My husband Fred Price and I, pardon?
Andrew.
It's coming. Live at 21318 Rolling Oaks Drive. And I want to begin by thanking you for the time to hear our concerns about the Skyline Village Development water overflow. In reviewing the development proposal, we noticed that there is little said about the surrounding single-family home neighborhoods, particularly homes located across Dyer Road and in the downstream path of the development's water overflow. The homes I speak of are located to the east side of Rolling Oaks Drive. These properties include a creek. That creek flows from Dyer Road to the Auburn Extension Farm and from there to Fly Creek. Our property, 21318 Rolling Oaks Drive, similar to Skyline Village's Holding Pond, is the lowest point of the neighborhood. We border on the Auburn Fence, which then flows into Fly Creek. Over the past eight years, we have seen the creek expand both in volume and saturation. Eight years ago, it rarely expanded beyond its creek bed. And the past, as time passed, it not only expanded during storms, but it often expanded halfway up into our yard, between the creek and our house. The other half of our yard is on the other side of the creek. In previous years, the creek dried up between storms. That no longer is the case. And the creek bed is often wet with puddles standing in between storms. And I must say, that is even in August. On the fun note, and there is a little bit of fun to this, we have, on occasion, enjoyed a strong water flow to the point of even being able to ride a boogie board down the creek. That said, it causes me to question seriously what damage any increase in the water flow and volume will have. When you have enough flow to ride a boogie board, that raises a question. We are at the low point. We are currently, we are also, our property is incurring, experiencing increased soil erosion. Additionally, saturation causes more and longer standing water will create further erosion up into our yard and to the foundation of our home. We ask, who, my husband and I ask, who can protect us from this property damage? We thank you for your consideration and hearing our concern.
Thank you.
I'd like to see you ride that boogie board.
Hi, I'm Kendall Arriman. I'm 21311 Rolling Oaks Drive. And thank you for the opportunity to me to speak. No doubt you are familiar with the arguments I might present, because this is not the first time you've seen me and not the first time such a development has been proposed on this property. So I too am familiar with responses we may expect, so I'm going to skip past those and have an opportunity to put for rebuttal. So I understand to our argument of our grossly overcrowding Fairhope, that it does not need more townhomes. You may say that there is a need for diverse housing. To that, I would reply that in February, I was present when over 500 townhomes were approved, without any opposition, by the way, across from the waters. And that's just one townhome subdivision recently built or in the works. So when exactly do we decide when those needs have been met? And additionally, these will be rental-only units. Developments such as these do not promote a sense of ownership and community, and they do not allow people to get a foot onto the property ladder. Rentals do not mean affordable housing. They often are in fact the opposite. You may also argue that the property owner has a right to develop his land, to which I respond, by all means. And we do appreciate the efforts that he's made to improve his plans. But as Mr. Prestwood stated, the property owner was aware of public opposition to a multifamily development and before, before it was purchased in November. So commissioners, it is your responsibility to make sure that the development is done responsibly and in a way that will benefit and enhance our city and community. Can you honestly say that 114 rental residences crammed into such a small area would benefit the community around Dyer and Gafer and Fairhope as a whole? We ask that, that the developer consider a subdivision of houses that would be, would enhance such a beautiful property rather than exploit it. The residents in our area are very concerned about property value, and we feel we have a right to protect that. And the notes where staff made the point that it was too far from village node for such a dense development, the developer referenced similar densities close to the area, but all of those are closer to the village node. Additionally, this map strategically crops out or omits our area, which is the R1 and R2 properties surrounding that property. Again, houses would be much more congruent with the area and would allow us, in the immediate vicinity, to retain property value. Lastly, I can imagine you may say that this is unzoned property, therefore your reach is limited. And I would reply by asking why we're here if you don't have the authority to have input on such property. I would also remind you that the property is currently in the process of being zoned as we speak, and our area has grown so tremendously in the last few years that 10 years ago, there was an attempt to zone it. They didn't get enough signatures on their petition to even get to the vote. This time, within 10 days, they had far exceeded the number of signatures necessary for that vote. The biggest problem that signature collectors had was rejecting people saying you don't live in the proper zoning area to vote, even though you want to sign this, you, you live in the city limits. And the vote passed by 84%. That's unheard of. The last, oh, I'm sorry. The people have spoken, and I ask that you look at the people who are here, who are present, we're here. If they want to raise their hands, those who are opposed.
No, please don't raise your hand.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, if that's not allowed. But please listen to the people and deny Skyline Village and, and help protect our city and stop this gross overdevelopment of my hometown. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who?
Brent Wiles. I'm at 21307 Rolling Oaks Drive in Fairhope. I appreciate that Hunter brought up the concerns with the traffic study. I have several additional concerns I wanted to express. I do not believe the findings are valid. I mean, right off the bat, an entire road, Jubilee Trail, which provides access to the Porch Place neighborhood and connects Dyer and Gafer Road Extension, does not appear to be included or mentioned. The fact that this development is zoned for Fairhope West Elementary is not factored in. Skyline residents will travel to and from Fairhope West Elementary, impacting the 98 and Gafer, 98 Fairhope Avenue, 98 and Dyer intersections. I believe the study indicates that an increase of nine cars is expected for travel in that direction, which seems highly unlikely for 114-unit, three-bedroom development. Other projects that this commission has approved, that Kendall mentioned, have not been factored into the projections. The increased traffic on Highway 98 from the senior living facility that's currently under construction in February, y'all approved around 500 units that will be zoned for Fairhope East Elementary. And that significantly increased traffic to Fairhope East will continue to impact Fairhope Avenue, Gafer Avenue, Bishop, and Dyer. Traffic associated with the church on Dyer Road does not seem to be appropriately factored in. On Sundays, the road is very busy and Wednesday nights as well. Cars end up even parked out on the side of the road even. And then just other general concerns with this study are that the traffic study in tonight's packet is using November 2021 data, report data for all the intersections except the one up Bishop and Fairhope Avenue, which was collected in 2022. No additional traffic study was conducted at the other intersections. And honestly, I don't recall seeing car counters in November like I have for other. And honestly, I don't recall seeing car counters in November, like I have for other traffic studies that have been conducted. The attachments were not provided for the more recent traffic study that included Farough Avenue and Bishop. We, we need time to request access to those records, since these documents haven't been made available for us to look at. And then finally, what Hunter mentioned, the T I, the quoting from the city's report, the TIS projected both an AM peak and PM peak level of service of E in 2024 for southbound traffic at the Bishop Road-Farough Avenue intersection with or without this development, but did not recommend any improvements. Staff does not agree with this conclusion, but does not have the expertise to determine what improvements are necessary. City staff that are familiar with reviewing these reports have clearly identified skepticism about the validity here. How can we possibly approve a project without sound data regarding the impact of traffic in the area? So I'm requesting that this submission not be approved until planning and zoning staff can contract a proper review of the updated traffic study. And finally, I'm gonna, I'd like to mention also that right now, as y'all have mentioned, there's a city moratorium on this type of development. The residents in the area have successfully, by public vote, established a zoning district for this part of the county. I recognize this application was made at the 11th hour, and due to technicalities, can still be considered. However, there's a clear message from both the city and county residents that this type of high-density development needs to be controlled. And I believe it would be negligent in this context for us to approve it and go forward with it. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. William Arringman, 21311 Rolling Oaks Drive. Is it okay if I pass something out to the commissioners? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay. Have some commentary for you. Yes, it's a couple pages. Thank you all for hearing us tonight. Three things, I attended the community meeting with SE Civil, and my concerns about this development have not changed since then. In fact, they've kind of complicated a bit. The three concerns I have are density, traffic, and drainage. Okay, and I know some of those have been brought up, but I'm going to give you some more detailed. Mr. Dias said that the subdivision regulations are very important in this, that these need to be met. So I'm going to give you several of those in front of you there that I think are deficient. The first one, density, relates to the second, too, traffic and also the drainage. Okay? So I think that is going to be the key to this bettering some of the issues that we're seeing that are almost conundrums, having to do with traffic. So the first thing I'll speak to is traffic. I bet you've never had anybody bring a transportation engineering textbook with them up here, so. I'll just define real quick what this means, what these level of services are. It's kind of like your highway capacity report card, you know? So we're saying now already, in the comments, staff comments, that we're at D's at Farough Avenue and Bishop. There's a school located right there, too, just recall that. But we're saying we're already at D's. Let me start with A, I'll give you just a definition of this textbook, what they say. This is free-flow operation, free-flow speeds prevail. Vehicles completely unimpeded in their ability to maneuver within traffic stream. Level of service B, reasonably free-flow, generally free-flow speed, ability to maneuver within the traffic stream slightly restricted. Okay? Level of service C, provides flow with speeds still at or near free-flow speed, freedom to maneuver within traffic stream noticeably restricted. Lane changes require more care and vigilance. Level of service D, speeds begin to decline slightly with increasing flow. Density begins to increase somewhat quickly. Freedom to maneuver is more noticeably limited. Minor incidents can be expected to cause queuing. All right? That's where we lie now. Where we're going in two years, at least if the calculations are correct, right? Those percentages are right. Describe, level of service E describes operation at capacity at its highest density values. Operations are volatile. Virtually no usable gaps exist in the traffic stream. Maneuverability within traffic stream is extremely limited. Average spacing is 110 feet at speeds over 49 miles per hour. That's not the case here. Any incident can be expected to produce a serious breakdown within extensive queuing. What I think is that it's somewhat unacceptable for us to say we're going to be at level of service E at this intersection and, but we're still going to recommend the approval of a development of 114 units just down the street. I find that unacceptable without discussion. And I have a solution to that that's somewhat innovative. If there's no other solutions, or how about drop the density? That may be a good solution. All right, so there's the first point on the traffic that I'd like to make. The second point on the drainage, if you'll notice in the handout, these is a review based upon Fair Hope subdivision regulations. Okay, requirements for the multiple occupancy projects. Okay, all of these reference the articles. All right? The first one is 3A1B says, existing drainage systems, including any structures immediately downstream, should be in the plans. Well, that's not the case, especially with the one culvert you have that backs up with moderate rain events to trap an entire subdivision within city limits if they need ingress and egress. That's also unacceptable to me. Okay? The 3A1F talks about a 10% rule that I think may either be misapplied or miscommunicated, because that 10% rule doesn't just talk about areas of the watershed. They don't show the 183 acres. That would be also nice to see. But that is the point to which downstream, that you need to calculate downstream effects. Not just that there's a comparison of the area, so we don't have to calculate. All right, so 3A1, let me get down to 5A. Culverts, I saw no hydrologic or hydraulic analysis of the culverts. 7A, and this is very important, it gets back to what the PE who analyzed the volumes talks about. The regulations say thus, even if the peak flow is effectively attenuated, the longer duration of higher flows due to the increased volume may combine with downstream stormwater conveyance systems to increase downstream peak flows. Applicant must demonstrate through hydraulic analyses that the detention facility will not exacerbate flooding downstream. What that means is, is yeah, okay, if you, if you take your flows and you are at or below pre, fine. But although you're attenuating, you have to look at the volume that's coming out, too, because the times of concentration downstream may be different. So you're going to, you could end up flooding somebody, because you're now taking something that had less volume, you're adding more volume to it over time. That analysis was not included. And you can read the rest of those. I have several of them on there. So I'm asking that this proposed, the, the, the application as proposed at the proposed density be denied, but that lower densities may be considered. Thank you very much.
Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Patrick Collins. I live at 29 South Rolling Oaks, near this development. I give you a handout, because I'm trying, I'm going to try to keep this fairly succinct and short. And I will tell you that about three or four people in the back said if I would get up and speak, that they wouldn't, so maybe same time anyway. The, this, on the very front picture right there, I just want to just remind you, and I think y'all know this, but the purpose of the regulations is to promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of present and future residents. That's according to the city of Fair Hope's regulations. And so I want to just touch on a couple of things. And I'm a lawyer by trade, so this stuff's kind of familiar with me. This is not exactly something I do every day, but I do have some information about that. But just to cite a case for you, you know, the planning commission's decision should not be, will not be invalidated unless it's clearly arbitrary. Y'all really have discretion whether to do this or not. I mean, y'all really do, and I'm going to show you what I mean by that. But you, because you can consider the public health, the safety, the morals, and the general welfare of us, people that are here tonight. Y'all can consider that when you make your decision about it. And so that's a discretionary thing. Now, the technical requirements, we can argue about. And that's what I've heard, traffic stuff, drainage and things like that, but there is a subjective aspect. If it wasn't a subjective aspect, we could just let staff decide. We wouldn't need you to do this. But we do, because there is some discretion here. And there's a, I was looking for a good case, and I found a case that was so scarily similar to this, out of Montgomery, this Copperfield apartment case, 1996 federal case. And it was oddly enough, it was 17 acres, they were going to try to build an apartment, and there was opposition to it. And the developer provided a traffic expert who gave an opinion about it and said, you know, but they didn't do, like we're saying here, they didn't do some other intersections further away. And the planning commission had concerns about that. And I will point out here, too, is Fair Hope East Elementary School is on Bishop Road. And, and all those people, somebody mentioned the 500 units out there. All those people are going to, be going to Fair Hope East, and they'll be coming down Gafer and trying to turn left there on the Bishop. And then the people at this complex, if it's approved, will be going to Fair Hope West. So there's going to be a lot more traffic. They didn't take that into account. This case here says that y'all can consider that, because in this, the same thing happened. The court said, they even had an expert, and the court said that, what about future development? You know, because can you consider that? And the developer in that case argued, no, you can't. They said, and they quoted, I quoted them here, said, it's absurd to suggest that, that the developer land will be required to perform a traffic impact analysis to take into consideration what future developer, development might be. And the court said, no, 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 no. That's what you're supposed to do. The court said, it is completely appropriate for the commission, this is highlighted, it is completely appropriate for the commission to consider what has already been approved when determining what else to approve. So y'all can consider all that other stuff, even the stuff that's just been approved and haven't been built yet. That's what happened here, and they said, they agreed. And the court said, the planning commission is not required to blindly accept the plaintiff's and the developer's traffic analysis merely because it was prepared by a traffic engineer. You have, you have the discretion to do that. You do not have to, you can consider what current traffic issues are and what future issues that may be expected to occur, because this development and the other ones that you've approved are that have been, been planned and approved, whether they're built or not. That's what that case is. So anyway, your subdivision regulations say, on the, I'm on page two of this handout I gave you, but the subdivision regulations, city of Fair Hope, as I said, that you can consider whether a subdivision endangers the health, safety, or welfare of persons or property as well. Not just persons, but property as well. And then, as I just read from a minute ago on the front cover, there is that quote about the things that you can consider, the future residents, the present residents, and their health, safety, and welfare. But I thought it was just interesting. One of the things that, the purpose of the subdivision regulations is to avoid congestion of population. That's right there in the, in the law, in the city of Fair Hope, to avoid the congestion of population. And that is really contrary, with all due respect to Hunter, contrary to what he's saying. I think that is the whole purpose of the comprehensive plan. They did them in the villages and the nodes and all that stuff. It was to spread out the things, put the commercial areas here, commercial area here, and then spread out the, you have those concentrations of people around the commercial areas, and as you go out, it should be less and less. So the fact that there's other apartment complexes near this, and they're much smaller, by the way, but in fact, actually works against approving this plan, because it says in your regulations, the void congestion of population. And with all due respect to Hunter, I think that is the opposite of what he was, he was saying here. So, but I even gave you the definitions of promote welfare and morals at the bottom of the page there, because I was thinking about, what does that really mean? I just got them out of Merck Webster's dictionary, I won't go over those. But the traffic study was, the staff doesn't agree with the conclusions reached, and that's, that's great. But it is a completely appropriate, and I quote from that case again, for you to consider what is already approved and what else to approve. So you can consider those other developments. You can consider the other intersections that weren't done. In fact, in that case, that Copperfields case, what they did is they said, we're concerned about these other intersections, too. And they said, you have every right to do that as a commission. Comprehensive plan on page four, the comprehensive plan, by the way, this 2015 comprehensive plan, as I read it, it says, we adopt the 2006 comprehensive plan. I have a couple of quotes from that. From 2006, because they're both still applicable, according to what it says. It says, a higher-density residence should not be located more closely to a village center affronting major street corridors. All right, and also says, so the new, it, it, the new construction is sensitive to context of surrounding as-built conditions. So in other words, what's around it, you can consider. What is already, already there, you can consider. And it also says, when lands will be subdivided outside the corporate limits of the city, the minimum design standards of all in counties shall apply when such standards are more restrictive. So if the county regs are more restrictive, then you can apply those. And I will just mention that I, I, I think, and I'm not an expert in this, but I think the green space calculations probably ought to be considered as well, because the, they're using the city regs, and if you apply the most restrictive, well, actually, the county regulations are, talk about open space, they call it open space in those regs. But the open space does not include the buildings, the buildings and all that. And I have the definition in here of open space, the county on page five, their regulations say streets, driveways, parking lots, buildings, and structures that a roof shall not be included as open space. So which applies? And so if you do.
They aren't included in ours either.
I think they are, well, they're using the calculations. They're not, they're not counting the buildings.
You're at about eight minutes, so we need to wrap that up.
They're not using, they're not, they're not, they're counting them in their calculations. But anyway, the, the, the point of what I'm trying to say is, is the discretion lies with, with you guys. And, you know, obviously, we're here because we're very concerned about it. We would love to see that you consider that the area has already been somewhat inundated with multifamily housing. And the biggest issue I see is the traffic problems, because you were, and you can consider those. Future traffic problems will be expected there, and we ask you to consider that as a, as this is a little bit overdone on this piece of property. And if you have gone out there and looked at it, when somebody told me they were going to do this, this, I was like, you've got to be kidding me. That piece of property is not a great location for, for 114-unit apartment complex. So just please consider that, and please use your discretion to make a decision in this that protects our welfare of our property and ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've, we've heard a lot about traffic and stormwater and, and density and some specifics there. Does anyone have a, have a new issue to speak to or some new points to make?
I think I have a new one. My name is Gerald Moore. I live at 19905 Lawrence Road. I represent the community on Lawrence Road in a similar situation that you will hear about next month. And we stand in opposition to this. I want to remind you that your staff recommended denial of this at the February meeting, because it did not meet the, the guidance of the, of. And I understand that its guidance is not in there. It has come back with four. It has come back with four less units in a butterfly park. I'm sure that added value to it. You've heard about issues, which I could talk about, rain and so forth, but I'm gonna talk about sewage. The lift station will be off the property. They didn't tell you who owns the lift station. Did they? Who owns it? Do you know? You will own it. Your sewage system was sued by the state in August for every lift station that they have being out of compliance. They issued a statement and a plan in December, and I hope you've read it, because it says they will not be in compliance until 2024. That's two years away. Every lift station has to be improved, and you're gonna add another one. And they don't tell you where is that lift station discharging to. Can it go to the system that can take it now? No, they don't tell you that. The last thing I wanted to tell you about, it has to do with the sewage, I mean, the traffic study as well. You will notice that the traffic study was done, I wanna make sure I read this correctly. No, I'm talking about the company that did it.
Neil Schaefer?
Neil Schaefer is the company that did it. They were paid for by SE Engineering. We have a lot of issues about these traffic studies, because you have allowed the developers to be very, very small when they look at these. We are contracting with one of the top traffic engineers at Auburn University to come in and look at the overall status. The new grocery store at Fairhope and 181 will have 300 cars on Fairhope Avenue going east. Our traffic study, it was done for us, shows that the traffic will be less than 50 cars per hour. What happened to those 250 cars? Where did they go? Well, you're not required to look at them, because they're a mile away. The last thing I want to point out to you is that your staff, and we want to point out, last time we were here in February, we were very impressed with your staff. They do a very thorough work. They look at everything, and they are saving trees. However, they contracted with the same company to do this review of the drainage. Same engineering company, paid by you, did the traffic study, paid by them. That is absolute conflict of interest. It's against the Board of Professional Leaders Code of Ethics, and it will be noted to the board for further action. We request that three of you tonight deny this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm Lisa LaTuret, and I'm at Four Porch Place Way. It's behind the church, and it is west of where this property would be built. I have kind of a, a 20-year overview, what I would like to share. My family residence, um, was one of the first in our neighborhood. At that point, the county farm, that's to the south of Porch Place, extended all the way to Gafer, where the assisted living is now. And during that time, um, obviously, the assisted living was approved to be built. They added, I don't know how much tonnage of dirt to raise that thing way up. We were promised that there would be no water problems. There have been nothing but water problems. Uh, Four Porch Place butts up to the farm that is in between the assisted living and Porch Place. That water just comes right into Porch Place. It's eroded our streets. Our retention pond is, to me, a health hazard, if anybody here wants to agree with that. I watch the water inch by inch get closer to the house every year. The lady from Rolling Oaks who does her boogie board on the creek. "I feel your pain, girl." But, um, I've also, in the past 20 years, seen canoes at the corner of Bishop in Gafer. There used to be a bunch of boats just always there. It was lily pads, and it was a lagoon. And what I've watched over this period of time is, um, us having water problems that we said they, we were promised never would happen, but we have them all the time. We get, like, we're kinda like, that topic is a hot potato between county and city, nobody wants to own it. And now, just right in back of our neighborhood, we're talking about this. And it just, it's like layered issues. If we can't fix the stuff that has already been done, why would you want to, like, these are beautiful custom homes that are around. They really are. And, um, people who love being here in Fairhope and living the American dream, this is like Mayberry, but all of a sudden, it's like, "Uh-oh, Mayberry is being threatened by stuff like this." And I just wanted to share that history. I don't have any numbers and statistics and whatnot, you've already heard plenty of that, which is very potent. But I also want you to know what I've watched over the, the time, and it's not right. And you all are in the position to be overseers of our properties and, and care, caregivers of our rights to have safe homes and promises met. And, um, and I appreciate your ears and your hearts, and just please think about everybody here.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more person to speak.
Um, my name is Jean Blake, and I live at 25 South Rolling Oaks Drive. Uh, Rolling Oaks Drive South goes down into a dip, um, and when we get the, and it doesn't have to be a hurricane, when we get a heavy rain, we can't get out of our neighborhood. I've sent pictures, and I'm in water up to here, not during a hurricane. And this is kind of a funny story, but it's sad. My kids were like eight and 10, and we were gonna go to Disney World. So, we were gonna drive all day, so we got 'em up at 5:00, and it had rained all night. And we packed up the car, we packed up the kids, we're going to Disney World, let's go. We get to the end of the street, and we had to stop. And we couldn't go, and I mean, you talk about, you talk about disappointment, I mean, the kids were crying and, you know, totally distraught. All I'm saying is, you just can't do these things. You can't add to, you can't add to something that you already know is happening. You already know what's happening. You've heard it, it's, it's true. And, um, my husband is not here, but he is an engineer, he's very experienced, and he has said the same thing about those water levels, increasing the flow and also causing the flow to stay, what crosses the road to not dissipate as quickly. Okay? It doesn't just cross the road and dissipate, it stays longer than it normally does. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during the public hearing? We'll, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we, we have some things that it would be nice for the city to speak to, and we have some things that we want the developer to speak to, but there were some, uh, you know, legal issues raised with, um, civil law and the, the issue of total quantity of water versus rate.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna state for the record, given the fact that two attorneys have spoke at the meeting, the fact that the phrase negligence of the planning commission was used, the reference to case law and cases and legal issues, I think it, uh, is, I don't wanna say obvious, but likely that the result, whatever the planning commission decides, uh, in this case, could be eminently likely for litigation, and therefore, if there's any questions related to legal issues, legal consequences of actions and that sort of thing, it's been my recommendation for the planning commission to go to executive session pursuant to Alabama law, and I can make that affirmation if that is the decision of the planning commission at that time, but that would be my recommendation as it relates to specific legal questions and liability and that sort of things.
And for technical reviews, especially when it comes to drainage and traffic, I think that's better handled by the, by the, by the, um, design team that did this. You know, I'll, I'll make some notes, you know, I think if you get five engineers in the same room and discuss the 10% rule, they'll all come up with a different answer. So, um, defending their position, I think, is, is on them. There was a, a lot here, and I'm kinda looking through notes that staff might be, be able to help with. Is there any specific questions the planning commission has?
Yeah.
For staff?
Yeah, um, there's a, I mean, there's a number of different, there are a number of different issues. There are a number of, of different solutions, and, and I'm not brilliant enough to, to tell you what all the solutions are, but first of all, let me, let me mention one thing, just so everybody knows. And the reason that, that I asked you not to raise your hands, just understand that a planning commission meeting, uh, has to do with rules and regulations, it's not a popularity contest. It's not a matter of how many people are for or against a given proposal that's in front of us. So, uh, showing of hands doesn't do anything, uh, unless it's intended to intimidate, but it doesn't, especially for those of us that have been on them for a long time. Uh, so that was the reason for that. The other thing, the, a lot of other things, I've been to Rolling Hills Drive in a, in a massive, in a massive flood. Uh, it is, and it is a flood, and one of the problems that you people there have is the culvert underneath your street. And granted, it was put there at one time, and it probably sufficed during that one time, but times change, and everything, everything changes. All of, I think all of Gafer Road, Jason, is that right? All of Gafer Road, which is a county-maintained road in Gafer, extension, county-maintained?
Right, wait, yes.
Yeah, I think it is. Anyway, all of, all of Gafer Road now drains down to you guys, uh, for the most part, and, and it's gotta get through there, and yes, that little dip that somebody mentioned a few minutes ago, um, it, it, it certainly is a problem. Now, I wouldn't suppose, I don't know whose responsibility it would be to, to remedy that culvert issue, whether there needs to be a bridge and the whole thing needs to be elevated to allow the release of that, to, to, to stop some of that problem, uh, whether it's the residents that are gonna have to buck up and, and do what needs to be done to solve that problem, whether the county, it's the county's issue, it's the city's issue, I think we had the same discussion the last time we were here on this particular project. So, it's, it's the residents, it's the county, and it's the city's issue as it relates to where all this water is, is coming from. Water's gonna go somewhere, I mean, it's got to go somewhere, it finds the lowest point, and that's where it's going. Um, so, it's a multi-pronged issue that needs to be resolved. The big issue though, for me, right at the moment, and, and Larry, you, if you got a, you got your traffic engineer here? Well, good, because, um, I travel Dire Road a bunch. I mean, uh, uh, an exorbitant amount of time, and it's, and, and on Bishop, and I concur that on Bishop, let's start at the south end, Bishop and Fairhope Avenue is one of the first train wrecks, and it is a massive train wreck. And it's not just during school hours. I've been trying to come north on Bishop to Fairhope Avenue and sit there for 10 minutes trying to get out, and then you take your life in your own hand, uh, by trying to get out of there. So, that is a problem, and now, we're gonna exacerbate the problem. You go over to, that's at Fairhope, all right? Now, you go over to Gafer, the, the line of sight at Gafer is horrible. I mean, it's, it's absolutely atrocious, and with people coming, trying to go to the school, if they're coming west on Gafer Avenue and they're trying to turn left, people that are on Dire or, or on Bishop coming, not on Dire, on Bishop coming south, or Bishop coming north, they've got stop signs. They can't get out. You get a, you get a queue back behind that. Um, Dire and Bishop is not an issue right now. That's, it is just not, because it's not that much of a deal. But the big one is Highway 98 and Dire Road. I mean, it is, it is absolutely atrocious, and all I can say is, in, in your traffic report, and I spent several hours this morning trying to find toothcomb, that traffic report, to understand what it was that they were trying to say in there, um, you gotta, it's fine for numbers to say whatever the numbers say. It's another thing to use common sense and to be there and try to utilize those intersections. You cannot, we had this, we had this conversation last month, I do believe, because of the retirement home across the street, on, on the west side of 98, and now the doctor's office and that other development right there, and how do you get out of, for example, Dire? How do you get out of Dire if you wanna go to grocery, or go down to, to, uh, one of the, one of the drugstores? You can't, because there's no way that you can get halfway across and feel protected without getting up on the curb. So, so my point of all this is, there's a massive traffic problem already there, and it's, it's all the way down Bishop to Gafer and all the way down Dire to Highway 98. And I, unless you can find a way to convince me otherwise, uh, there's got to be a solution. There's got to be some traffic improvements done in those areas before, uh, before anything else can be done. And Gafer, Gafer Extension and Bishop Road is horrible. I mean, it really is horrible. So, I mean, there's a bunch of others, but that's my, my top two.
Well, do we wanna bring Larry and, uh, up to answer questions from, are there other, I mean, to other questions from council people?
If, yeah, I mean, that's what, I would assume that's what they're here.
Yeah. So, you probably have your own li-
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll leave the traffic up to the traffic consultant, but I did wanna, um, talk on a few of the items that I heard, and if I leave any off, I think you probably have a list too.
Okay.
So, just let me know. Um, the first big question was the rate of runoff versus the volume of runoff. The subdivision regs, as far as the hydrological report, until you get into that 10% rule, is focusing on the rate of runoff, and that is what we analyze, that's what we always analyze, that's what the county requires, that's what the city requires. When you hit that 10% rule, it's not saying you can't increase the volume of runoff, it's telling you, you need to look at the downstream impacts from, for that volume of runoff. Um, we did not meet the thresholds for that, and I think as, um, it might have been Art was saying, somebody was saying that you get five different, or it might have been Hunter, five different, um, engineers that have a different interpretation. We've been using the same 10% rule that we've always, um, looked at every time we have a project. Sometimes we do them, sometimes we don't have to do them because of that threshold, using the same as whenever I was doing stormwater reviews for the city. I used the same criteria, um, which was the total drainage area, um, that was coming to a point, and if we exceeded 10% of that basin at that study point, which we did not in this case. Um, and so, that was, that was the first point. Um, I haven't seen the reports that they produced, uh, I can't touch on every single point of it, but, um, that's the big difference is, um, in the subregs, when you're looking at your two 510, um, 25, 15, 100-year storm events, you're looking at the, if there is an increase in the rate of runoff. There was a comment that was made that, um, they were originally, the original developers were trying to- were trying to annex this property to avoid some type of downstream constraint, that was not the reason they were looking at annexing into a PUD, that conversation never happened. So I don't know where that assumption came from. If they did, it was not told to the engineers that would have been able to tell them what these rules were. And then, there was a comment, and this kind of gets into the traffic, but a comment that the 500 units would come down Gafer and turn left to get to the school. When you're dropping off, you'd actually come down Fairhope Avenue, but I know there's other implications, and I'll let, I'll let the traffic consultant discuss what he did and didn't include within the report, but my, my children attended that school, and you would always come down Fairhope if you, because you have to make a left into the entrance on Fairhope, you can't access it during pickup or drop off from Bishop, so.
And then you exit off of Bishop?
Yes, you do, exit onto Bishop. How do you, oh, I was talking about the 500 units.
Let's, let's not get into side-
Yeah, I was referring to the 500 units they're talking about off of 181.
Okay.
Coming down Gafer to get to the school. And speaking on Gafer, and we discussed this at the community meeting, and I told the, them at the community meeting that I would bring it up to the county, because one of the comments that they had early on was, is would it be possible to have a four-way stop there at Gafer and Bishop? And so I mentioned that to the county, and they said that would have to be something, that would have to be petitioned to the county commissioners, they have to approve any traffic changes like that. So I just want to let you know, I did follow through with what was requested in that community meeting. There was a comment about the green space and it being more stringent in the county, we actually analyzed it both ways, the county requirements and the city requirements, because both of y'all have to approve it. They approve it at a staff level, not a planning commission level, but, you know, we, we met the green space, open space requirements at both levels. There was a comment about a lift station being proposed that y'all own, as of right now, the system is a gravity system that does gravity to an existing lift station, and we've been working with the utilities to, I mean, we've actually had, I think, three different scenarios. One, we were taking the sewage up to Greeno via a lift station on the property, and then we are taking it to another lift station, and then we ended up going gravity. So we've been working closely with Mr. Langley and his staff on getting the sewer to a comfort level, and any improvements that need to be made are going to be reflective in these age of construction and impact fees, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's kind of the, how we got to this point of where the sewer is going. There was, it really doesn't matter, it's semantics, but there was a comment that SC Civil paid for the traffic impact study, which we didn't, the developer did, but just wanted to put that on record that we did not pay for that TIS. And then the last thing I had was the lady talking about porch plates and the issues they have with the improvements that happened over on Gafer with the retirement community. Our, our property does not flow to that development, we actually are flowing away from it, so they're upstream of our development. Those were the questions, comments that I had, so if I didn't hit everyone that you had, please let me know.
That covers everything that was on my list, except-
Except for traffic.
Yeah, except for the traffic. So if they could, the representative who did the traffic study could speak to that, I think that would, might be helpful. Thanks, Larry.
Larry, let me ask one question for you. Did, did you look at the, right there at Rolling Hill, I think is what they call it, did you look at that, that culvert underneath that street by chance?
We analyzed it when we were doing a project on Gafer, it's called Ten Tops, and it does have flooding issues, and I, during the community meeting, I noted that as well, and in that community meeting, I told them I would bring it up to the county engineer and the city engineer to find out what could be done.
Whose street is it?
That's the big question. That, yeah, the county, when I met with Wheezy at the county, she said it wasn't hers, she pulled up the right-of-way map, and then Richard said, yes, it is hers, and so that, that is the big, yeah, that's the big question is who's, who's street is it, and what can be done to alleviate it. It does have flooding issues.
It's got, it's got a real issue.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's somebody's street.
Yeah. I, I agree.
I stole my check, somebody owns it.
I've told both engineers, the, the city's engineer and the county's engineer, that there's issues there, and that the people that live in those areas are experiencing flooding. I had a friend who used to live back there, and I know that-
Maybe you could be the impetus to get the county and the city to work to go and get the flank fixed.
I'll gladly create a chain.
You're the man. You're gonna be the man.
All right, thanks.
Good eve, good evening, my name's Shane Bergen with Neil Schaefer, I'm the one that completed the traffic analysis for this, this study, or for this project. And just to start out, by the original study, the boundaries of it were bound, or were determined by Ballin County, as the project was in Ballin County, part of theirs, as you go to them, and they tell you what intersections to study, in addition with the driveways. And then, I guess just jumping right into it, with staff comments, you know, Hunter had, had put up there about growth rate, sitting in here, I even went on and looked over at 98, and historic counts on 98 still show about a 1% growth rate going back to 2016, so that's kind of right in there where we're playing, is, yeah, you go to somewhere like 181, and those growth rates are higher, and the state's using something in the realm of, I think, 3% on their design for when they're four-lane in the roadway to double capacity out there. And so we still feel comfortable within that 1% of the area that we're in. And, you know, and the big, I guess you can say the big one is the level service E that shows up on southbound Bishop at Fairhope Avenue, and, you know, part of the TIS is to show what the traffic changes are with the development. And so with existing, it is D in the morning and E in the afternoon, and then if you grow traffic 1% for it all, it shows up being E morning and afternoon, and then when you add the development in, it's still E. As Hunter alluded to, that the, I think the city stuff says to do the peak hours between 4:00 and 6:00, that intersection actually peaks at 2:45 in the afternoon because of the school, not a surprise. You go in there and you actually look at the existing counts from that school, and you can have in the afternoon on, like, southbound Bishop, you only have about 10 cars in a 15-minute period, and then it jumps up to about 75 because of the school, and then once 30 minutes is over, it actually drops back down again. And with that, we didn't show any improvements there, partially because the development is not changing the level of service at that location. I went back and I looked, I've actually did a study at that intersection in 2007 and 2016, and we had levels of service E and F at that intersection back in '06 and in '17 also. At that point, there were some recommendations made to the city to, on how to fix that, some of it was school entering and exiting, and that's changed a little bit when they, I guess, demoed the old piece and added on to the new school. So traffic patterns have changed in that area a little bit. You know, comments on some stuff not being included, that we take those traffic counts at the intersections, so any, any traffic coming out of like a church or another roadway is going to show up at those intersections when we count them, that they were counted, the three originals were counted in October of '21, and then the Fairhope was counted in February as it was added, it was asked to be added after the first submission. I mean, I guess it's, you know, it's kind of interesting with one of the comments about, you know, definitions of level of service, and the definition that you got was a highway segment level of service. When it comes to these, there's intersection levels of service that's based off a delay, and you end up with signal and unsignalized delay, all these intersections are two-way stop controls, so it's, you know, your main lines don't have to stop, so they get levels of service A at those intersections, while the side streets are experiencing anywhere from B to E at Fairhope, because they're having to stop and wait for a gap to turn into traffic. And, you know, you try to, I think there was some stuff about including some of the other developments in, into the, into the study, we weren't asked to include those, so they were not included. You know, what it, what you try to accomplish with some of the growth rate is some of the future stuff that you have coming in, is it possible to add the stuff in? It is, you just have to take the other studies that were done and just put their traffic in. Now, if their traffic's on 98, then a lot of the issues aren't going to be there, because those are signalized intersections or unsignalized, and right now 98 does have the capacity for those additional. I guess it's, I guess I just opened it up to questions for y'all.
But 98, for example, the through traffic, the through traffic traveling east, I mean, north and south on, on 98, yeah, that's not an issue. The issue is getting out of your side streets, where you don't have a traffic, a traffic light or reasonable breaks. When you've got people that, for example, at Gafer, you got people at the light at Gafer, a lot of them coming east on Gafer, turn to come down the four-lane, going north for whatever reason. So when the lights, when the light changes there, as an example, to stop the traffic going north and south on 98, all of a sudden you've got this massive of vehicular traffic coming off of Gafer, both coming east and coming west, it turns up to four-lane. You don't really have a gap that you can get out of Dire for, but every so often, and then when you do, you don't have a place to, to get halfway across and wait for the traffic to break on the other side. It's one of the problems there. Gafer Extension is another, is another issue, because it's more about the line of sight. It is a horrible, it's a horrible intersection in terms of being able to see either north, I mean, east and west, either way, and then when you've got school traffic turning or coming out in afternoons, you can't, you can't get across that, that particular intersection. Let me ask you, the, the big thing, your traffic study was done in October of '21, is that right?
The orig, the original council were done, yeah.
But what, but were schools even in then?
They were. It was right before Halloween, so they were in. Yeah, 20, it's '21.
That particular time, that was more of the questions that I had.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things you always try to do, is you try to count traffic on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday during the normal time.
Wasn't very, wasn't very normal time, was it?
They were back in session, but there were a lot of people going virtual.
I'm sorry?
They were back in session, but I think a lot of people were still virtual, or opted for that.
I think there was a lot of, a lot of people that were back in their offices at that time. I'm just saying that during the pandemic, when, and we won't even go in there.
Yeah, I mean, you, you see, you see in '21, especially later half of '21, you saw counts actually rebound back to where they were, kind of in '19, just looking across the board, you know, I'm not saying this particular area, but-
Personally, and I understand how you do your job, but from a common sense standpoint, traveling those intersections an extended amount of time in my given week, it isn't, it isn't that way. There, there, and it's all times of the day, there's no certain time that I go through there, but they're not, they're, they're, they're dangerous. And I don't know, maybe there's something, four-way stops at a couple places that allow folks to get across, and you can see the frustration in the people. Anyway, that's-
You're seeing, you're seeing the county do that in other places, putting up four-way stops.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, build us around about.
I'm surprised there's not one at 13 and Gafer yet.
Ah, they all know it. Well, there is one, no, yeah, there is one at Gafer and 13. There's a roundabout there.
I'm thinking, I guess I'm thinking of the next one, there's four-way stop, there's roundabout, roundabout, and then they got a, a four-way stop.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Are there any more questions on the traffic study you guys? Thank you. So back to Hunter. I thought it might be helpful for, you know, several people mentioned y'all's, the staff recommendation changing this time versus the last time, and just if you could just clarify the criteria by which you were evaluating this time versus last time.
Sure, and, and I don't think it was, there was anything hidden, anything else. Our reports went out to the public, we didn't have a meeting, but it was very clear with the evaluation criteria while we recommended denial last month, or February, whenever this was going to be on the agenda. A lot of the comments here about multifamily, well, that's not something we can look at. We, that's a use. Subdivision regulations don't have a use. I mean, that, that's one of the risks of remaining unzoned, and I'm proud of everyone for, for going out and getting zoning. But this application did come in before that, and we can bemoan that all we want, but that is the facts. It, it not only came in before that meeting, but there was a length of time past that council meeting where people could have gotten applications in. This was in, and really, there was only some issues with the completeness on the watered service. This was actually in, I think, two months before, you know, so the, most of that, the green space was one of those comments, as we mentioned in the staff board, I think I hit all of those details that, where they fell short. The, I do think there's still some traffic, I don't, I don't know what the answer is there. We, course, course of action for the planning commission? We do acknowledge that the commission may, it's part of your bylaws, may contract with city planners and other consultants for such services that may be required or established with approval of the mayor and council. So that is, if you want, and I'll tell you, the, the appearance of the Neil Schaefer doing our work, this is, it's all public record, there's been made many meetings, we talked about this, we have to budget and do certain things for contract employees, and we awarded that back way before this was ever up. So that's an annual contract, so that we can act quick. You know, going through counseling, getting things budgeted on a one-by-one basis takes a long time with bureaucracy. So that is a, engineering firm, and we actually reduced, did not fulfill one of our city planners to have that contract for this year. So that was in play way before this ever came up, so yes, we didn't send that to, to Shane, with, who is with Neil Schaefer, for the traffic, but an independent part of their company did do the drainage report. Both of those things could be looked at by another party, so we can see fit and mayor and/or council budget is, is appropriate, or is willing to fund that request.
I really meant just the basic thing to clarify, that several people said, well, why did your recommendation change when all they did was change four units, and the thing that changed is they were previously asking to be part of the city, and we were, we were reviewing it by different criteria than just the subdivision.
No, no, there, that was the PUD, so-
Okay.
We had a lot of comments there.
Okay.
Under the PUD, we had a lot more, you know, it was about how it looks, we could do use, we could, you know, a lot of things there, and, and really some of the feedback for those that went there at the time, you know, make the green space better, you know, you got a little too much density here. You know, actually, our zoning ordinance has requirements for townhomes, what they kind of look like, give some, some ideas. That applicant didn't, did not choose to do that, so what we looked at, and there is a little bit of confusion, because this is the third round we've submitted a, a review, so in February, when we submitted the reviews in your packet, that was just for the MOP, just like this. And, and those things, while we did say that, that was green space, it was the road, access road. The, we actually, not a reason for denial at that time, but we did ask in the report that we'd be coming to the planning commission to ask for the additional traffic research at Fairhope and Bishop. So they submitted that now, and that's reasons for questions, but I'm, do we, anything else you don't remember?
Okay.
I mean, it's, a lot of it's green space, and, yeah, I mean, you know, when, when somebody says we've got park, but in our, in our subdivision regulations, that requires you have that green space type, you have to have three acres, well, that's, that's a very clear denial. I mean, we're, we're a lot more black and white in subdivision regulations, right or wrong. know, that's, we did discuss how those were laid out. And if you notice, they changed, like the clubhouse, and moved some things around, so it's all being addressed on that central road.
So just for clarity for everyone, the planning commission at this meeting tonight has the ability to approve the MOP, to approve the MOP with conditions, to deny the MOP with stated reasons for denial, or to table the application for further study and additional information.
You know, some of the, some of the issues that, that I have, I don't know how you condition them because they're, they're more subjective than, than, you know, like line of sight. I mean, the things that are more subjective, and if you're going to put a condition on something, to me, it needs to be fairly concrete. Is that not correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's accurate.
Okay, well, all right. Okay. That's, that's the way I feel about it, and I'll.
Well, I mean, there's serious, I'm hearing serious concerns with the traffic in particular and the traffic study where there's still some body water, not to use the wrong.
Well, and I don't want to lead, I don't want to lead them on. Certainly, there, there are issues and I, and my feeling about a project of this magnitude is if your community has got problems. And the problems to me are drainage, not necessarily that this one is, you know, going to, it'll increase the amount of water over time, but it's not going to release any more off of it than what it is. But there's already a problem. And the problem is really, realistically, is Gafer extension, and that's the county. But you got the city involved. So, but it's a time to me that this is where you get a developer that's got the ability to push the envelope and get those entities instead of pointing fingers at each other saying, okay, here's what we, what we need to do to solve the problem. The traffic issue, it's, it's not going away, and I, I feel very strongly about that. And if I had to, if I had to make a rec, make a motion, Larry, I would, I would move to deny this, just based on the, on the traffic issue. And I know you've got a study, and I know you've got a report, but I, I just, I've been there. I've been there for, for several years, traveling that road, Dyer and Bishop and 98 right there. And it, and it's gotten worse and worse and worse. But at the same time, if you, if you guys could, could fix it, but to get this many people to keep coming back every month because it's, you know, it's, we've, we've tabled it to see if they can get a, you know, get, so you can get something else done? No, I'm not about that either. I mean, that's a lot of people's time. I don't know, their time probably more valuable than mine, and that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of effort and a lot of time for a lot of people. So anyway, that's kind of my, that's my take on it.
Yeah.
And then we need, we need, but we need to do something. I mean, we need to do something with this, and we need to do it tonight.
Yeah. Well, and I mean, in both cases, there's pre-existing conditions that are bad, and you, the question is, you, you don't want to make them worse. I know they don't, the developer doesn't have to, maybe there is an opportunity to fix them, but they're not obligated to fix them, but we don't want to make them worse. And it has to do with density, which relates to stormwater and traffic.
Well, we know they're not going to get better with this development.
Yeah.
So, anyway. All right? So, what do you want? Looking for a motion?
I think so.
It looks like John is ready to make a motion.
John.
I know, and after standing to leave, I stopped making motions, but I mean, I'm, I'm all for.
Okay. So anyway, I would make a motion, and, and I, and typically, typically when you make a motion to approve just for informational purposes, you don't have to give a reason for why you have approved it because the staff generally will have made a recommendation to approve it. But if you recommend, especially one in contradictory to the staff's recommendation, it's always, I think, personally, it's always important to give a reason why you've denied it. And so I would, I, yeah, I'll make a motion. And my motion is to, let me go back here. Case SD 2203, Skyline Village, a move that we deny this for the specific purpose that there are drainage issues, but the most important issue has to do with the question of, of traffic and safety. And I'll go back to what I always throw in there is the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And anyway, that's my motion.
I'll second it. Can I do that? Or you could second it.
I would definitely second it.
We'll all second. So we have a second? All in, all in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And if y'all are going to leave, please leave quietly.
Yeah.
Can we take a?
We're going to take a five-minute break. We're going to call the meeting back to order. Thank you, thanks to the public for your patience. If there was just one issue that a lot of people wanted to speak to, we would have put you first on the agenda, but since there are two, we, sometimes it's good to take a little break. So the next item on the agenda is 2205, a public hearing to consider the request of Goodwill Mills in Kwood on behalf of the owner for preliminary plat approval of Battles Trace Phase Eight. And Mike is going to walk us through it.
Good evening. Mike Jeffries, the city of Fairhoop. As you said, it's a public hearing at the request of GMC on behalf of RSA. It's a 51-lot major subdivision, approximately 28 and a half acres, located on the east and west side of Colony Drive, just north of County Road 34 or Battles Road. On this left side of your screen is the zoning map. This property is zoned TR District. On the right is an aerial showing the property again on the east and west side of Colony Drive. On the screen is the master plan that you've seen through the previous phases as well. Again, it kind of shows you the location and context with all, what's already currently developed out there. The right is the inset of Phase Eight, blown up, a little easier, a little easier to see. Copy of the front of the plat, the areas highlighted in yellow, those are already approved, houses built, subdivisions. On the bottom right-hand of your screen, outlined in dark black, again, is the current lot, proposed lot configuration. Site data table, again, 51 lots, green space, 5.71 acres, the TR District, front setbacks per the TR District, 10-foot front, 5-foot rear, and 35-foot height. Utilities, water, the water main currently goes through the middle where some of the lots are. That water main is being relocated along Colony Drive for sewer upgrades will be required for the existing lift station. Gas will be installed in the utility easement furthest from the right-of-way. Power is provided by Riviera Utilities and communication by AT&amp;T. Drainage, the west side will sheet flow into a series of pipes in a proposed pond, then eventually into Sweetwater Lake. The east side will sheet flow into a series of pipes and into the existing pond on the northeast. All the off-site water draining through the site was taken into an account, and on the drainage that, excuse me, the large pond, when it was constructed, was built contemplating the future developments that were to come along with Battles Trace. Subject property in the TRD, TR District, and if approved, the next phase of Battles Trace, the TR District does require that the overall gross density for residential areas be no greater than three and a half units, and that the TR District provides at least 20% green space or open space. Both of those conditions have been met. What we did notice on review, we were, originally submitted this, it was delayed about a couple months, brought back to us, is there was, on the plat, shown a remnant parcel being left over. That area is highlighted in blue on here. On the right is kind of an overlay of where that would go. And the remnant parcel was being left out, wanting to do some pickleball courts or some croquet courts. There, as you can see it on the screen, an image provided to us. This would be in addition to the clubhouse and amenities that are currently out there. First question was, are these facilities allowed, allowed use in the TR District? The answer is yes. At the beginning, tennis courts, related facilities, pickleball courts, if you're not familiar with it, similar, similar to a tennis. And also, nature and recreation areas and facilities are in allowed use. Another overlay, this worried staff a little bit, all the existing trees, the original tree survey and removal that we received, did not contemplate the pickleball court location. As far as I know, you know, it's still a conceptual idea, this hasn't been locked into place. So the pickleball courts, they could be removing more trees than shown in the original design without knowing where that final placement is going to be. We could not contemplate that. And this was not in your staff report. After staff reports were written, this came to my attention. So this is new, new to you as well, so stop me if there's any questions in between.
What was north of the?
That is two croquet courts in that grass lawn area being proposed.
Okay, you say, and it's not in our staff report, but you are saying that you're not including it here?
I'm saying this, it's going to be included. That remnant parcel was not shown as an actual lot, so this.
But it's something we're considering tonight?
But something I'm going to ask you to consider.
Okay, all right.
And you'll see I've got some additional conditions in order to capture this lot into the actual subdivision. Staff recommendation is approval of SD 22.05 with the following conditions. The first three in black are, as you saw in the staff report, more of a housekeeping items for, provide a schedule of values for Exhibit A in the maintenance agreement, which will be done at final plat, provide the revised O&amp;M agreement to include Phases One through Eight and updated stormwater facility maintenance agreement. Three was all utility locations and improvements shall be coordinated with their respective utility department. The last three are the additional conditions. One is provide revised drainage narrative, including the drainage for the area currently labeled remnant parcel to be approved by Public Works Director Richard Johnson. Find us at the end, not 100% certain if this area with these, you know, new impervious surface was included in the drainage calculations, but want to be sure that all the water is accounted for where it's going. Five is to revise the preliminary plat to include the remnant parcel as a lot number, and it can be labeled reserved for future recreation. And six is to provide tree removal and landscape plan to be reviewed and approved by the planning and zoning director for the proposed future recreation area. So if any questions on behalf of staff, I'll be happy to answer them, and we have GMC with us tonight, the engineer of record, to answer any questions on behalf of them.
Is this the last, this the last phase?
No, sir. This is.
The last one down around the left?
Going back to this, the red line on the large, the larger map, everything south of that red line has either, has been developed besides Phase Eight. Everything on the north end along the Twin Beach area, that all has not been developed, and that's for future.
That's a curve at Twin Beach, right?
Correct. And this, this is a conceptual plan. There has not been a preliminary plat for any of that, but that's what, you know, may be possible in the future.
Okay.
This was the last of the original easel?
Yes. This is, this is the last phase of the original TR District excluding the, two years ago.
The stuff to the north was an addition.
That was an addition, yes, sir. Correct.
When was that original TR District, 2000?
I believe that was.
It's hard to kind of figure it out.
About 2000, 2011, 2012, I believe, was the original, original zoning.
09 was one of the, there was something going on in 09, was something going on.
2012 may have been the first phase, the first initial phase of construction in 2012 after it went through the zoning process.
Okay. And is there a, is there, I didn't see a plan. We have the tree removal plan, but it's not overlaid with the lots anywhere that I could see, maybe?
I do not have that.
Okay.
I do not have that to put on the screen.
Okay.
And the, the difference between what is shown here on the screen for Phase Eight and what is on the preliminary plat is there's actually lots removed and that cul-de-sac brought in to allow additional room for where they're wanting to put the pickleball courts and the croquet.
I do want to mention, you know, the T, we talk about the TR District, and all of this is on TR District, but within that, there are subzones about what can be done. So a lot of those things are, if you, you have this zoning, but you can do any of the lesser uses. What's proposed is actually less than, because I think it's big rise.
Correct.
Is what this is zoned. So this could be two-story, I think, up to two-story.
Could be, could be a lot taller, more dense population.
Apartments, things, townhomes, things like that. So, but they have chosen to do the same density as what it is adjacent to, other than the tower, obviously.
Okay.
Mike, in the staff report, it said 28.53 acres and 51 units. But what you're saying in the picture that you've shown us right there, you're saying the cul-de-sac has been moved back to the east, and there've been lots eliminated?
Correct. So going, going back and forth here where the original plan was to the current.
So it looks like maybe what, five lots have been removed?
That faint outline, I believe it might have been seven.
Seven?
And, correct me, Jeremy, if you remember?
Sounds right. I'm going to do six or seven. I can't remember the best one.
Think six.
All right.
Maybe seven. For some reason, seven was in my, what I remember.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Mike before we get the developer up here to speak to it?
My name is Jeremy Sasser with Goodwill Mills in Kwood. I think Hunter and Mike have done a great job of covering everything. The one thing I do want to note is the recreation area, that layout is very preliminary, that they're still tweaking to be done. So please do not use that layout, that is what's going to happen. We still are working through that with the client. Do you have any questions for me?
No.
Okay.
I think we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I believe there's some people from the public who'd like to speak to this item. Again, just a reminder, please try to keep it to three minutes, and, and, you know, if someone has stated something, know that we, we've heard it.
You already saw what that three minutes was like in the last.
I did.
The petition is.
Don't boil, don't boil eggs by that three minutes.
Yeah. They took away my little hourglass.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Manning, and I live at 934 Hibiscus Way in the colony. Ladies and gentlemen of the planning commission, I'm here today to respectfully request that the proposal to approve Battles Trace Phase Eight be tabled until certain questions can be answered by RSA and Stewart Construction. I'm speaking on behalf of the many residents of the colony that signed the petition I submitted to your committee earlier today. The colony of Battles Trace is advertised as a luxury community with a resort lifestyle. Its amenities include membership in the Lakewood Club, two professional golf courses, a resort-style swimming pool, tennis courts, and use of Sweetwater Lake. When buying a home in Battles Trace, you are buying a lifestyle. But the continued pillaging of the land, stripping it clean of trees to build bigger homes on more and smaller lots, has had a detrimental effect on the natural beauty of Battles Trace, as well as the amenities that the homeowners pay for. Driving into the colony from Battles Road, you enter through a beautifully landscaped gate. Just beyond the gate, to the east is a gentle hill with lovely live oaks leading to the Azalea Golf Course. To the west is heavily wooded lowland containing old pine trees and live oaks with a creek bed leading to the Lakewood Club and Sweetwater Lake. This is the proposed site of Phase Eight with a cul-de-sac road to the west of Colony Drive and a circular road to the. and a circular road to the east. In order to build the road necessary, many trees, some of which are heritage trees according to size, would need to be removed and much of the current vegetation cleared. I was happy to see tonight the time spent discussing one tree downtown, but here, we are talking about hundreds of trees. As you can see by the pictures I provided this commission previously, there's an extensive silt problem in Sweetwater Lake and the connecting retention pond, referred to the residents as the turtle pond, due to the large numbers of turtles that inhabit it. The silt erosion and runoff into the lake is due to poor erosion management by Stewart Construction on their home construction sites. After previous complaints, silt fences were installed but poorly maintained by the company. The silt runoff grows worse with each storm. To clear more land of its natural erosion barriers, especially in this heavily sloped acreage leading to Sweetwater Lake, will only increase the silt deposits into the lake, having a detrimental effect on the aquatic inhabitants, as well as the limits, limit the ability of the residents to enjoy this amenity. The clearing of this heavily wooded land will also have an effect on the local bird population, as well as our migratory birds. From the website of the colony, swim, paddle, kayak, this pristine body of water provides an abundance of recreation. Drop your line and fish away the afternoon, just keep your eye on the bobber, Sweetwater Lake is fully stocked. It's a nature sanctuary where wild birds gather and butterflies dance. Like Narcissus himself, you will be unable to take your eyes from this magnificent amenity. This description is hardly the lake as we know it today. We would like to see a silt mitigation plan to remediate the damage done to the lake up to this point. Our hope is that you will consider requiring an environmental impact study to be conducted before any approval is given for this area to be cleared of its natural vegetation. The residents of the colony are also concerned that the Phase 8 expansion will leave no growth plans for the Lakewood Club, as it backs up to the pickleball courts being constructed. The residents of Phase 1 were told the colony would consist of 60 to 70 luxury home sites. Currently, there are over 200 home sites in the colony, with the plans on the company website to be well over 600 homes, stretching from Battles Road to Twin Beach, with each homeowner required to be a member of the Lakewood Club. That has tripled the membership with no plans to increase the size of the club facilities. We would like RSA to speak to plans to accommodate this exponential community growth with regard to the Lakewood Club before allowing Phase 8. I understand that RSA as owners of the land have rights, but I also feel as residents who purchased into the community and lifestyle that RSA was selling, that we also have a right to what we purchased. Currently, we, we are in a taxation without representation situation with RSA. Though we pay their management team a substantial sum each month, we have no say regarding the community overall. Complaints are met with deaf ears and a lack of concern. We only ask that community standards that were so appealing to us as purchasers be continued now that we are owners. We ask that RSA and Stewart Construction be held accountable by this commission and responsible for maintaining the beauty of the colony, and that it will continue to be a premier community in fair hope.
Thank you. State your name and, and address.
I'm Charles Reynolds. I have a house across from the proposed building and on 6840 Battles Road, was the Don Alby House, if you guys know that house.
And, and we did receive your letter, so just, just so you know, I should have probably stated that a little earlier as, as the other letter was being read. We have read these letters, so if, if you could please...
So don't waste your time rereading.
Yeah, comment in addition to that, but we, we have already read the letter.
I actually made that assumption.
Okay.
But, I also have another house at 16 Lupine, so I do like your neighborhood. I bought another house inside the neighborhood. And my concern is partly what you just heard, the lake is filling in, and partly because I just grew up in the woods, and I think you don't need a lot of woods. I grew up bird hunting, and if you hunt quail, you know that's the only kind of bird with my father in North Alabama. And I understand this is owned by teachers, I think the woods teach something. You don't need a lot of them. A kid, first he plays under his mama's feet, then he plays around the block, but measuring long strips of grass, you're gonna have grass from here to the sun, but you can't play on it if it's three feet wide. And I think a kid needs some woods to play in. He can't play on the golf cart course. When, when my kids grew up, we were down the street from Christ the King, and we found out you could camp in that little bit of woods behind Bayside, that's public property. And now I have one son who's a paratrooper in the woods in Poland. I have another son who walked the whole Appalachian Trail, and now he's a drummer in New York. Another who camped in Fiji and actually inducted him into some tribe where the great-grandparents were cannibals. And now he's a finance major in finances movies. But I think the woods, just a little bit of woods, has something to do with grazing up kids. And one of my neighbors said, they're turning it into all sidewalks. And those are beautiful woods. I hear owls there at night, you know, owls mate for life. And there's a couple that's there that they spend the evenings in that strip of woods, which are just downright beautiful, and they spend the dawn on my house oftentimes. So, you know, across the street from me, okay, build some houses, so I'll use some privacy, but I would, I would campaign that maybe south of that driveway, not south, west, west of the driveway, the part where they're talking about pickleball, maybe kids need a few trees more, they need something else planned to do on the sidewalk. So I would propose that maybe, I don't know if you want to make the same kind of money, maybe increase the lot size 50%, build the house 50% more, and double the price. I don't know what that does. I've never built a, a neighborhood, but I've lived in a bunch of neighborhoods, and a neighborhood without woods is a woman without jewelry. She can be beautiful, but she needs some jewelry on to kind of sparkle things up a little bit. So, that's it, I'm just, I have my grandbaby, one of my grandsons is coming down, he's the grandson of the son who's in Poland. His mama will be staying at that Lupine house, is where I bought it, so grandbabies and kids could come as bait, and I'm using that neighborhood as bait, so they'll come visit granddaddy. But I'd like to take that little kid and walk around, we don't need a freaking national forest, but we could use a few trees to walk around under. And so I'm here, if I raise it, I realize, okay, so what, I still live a nice life. But I think that there's something to be said for having a little bit of forest and not all sidewalk and grass. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to? Okay.
I live down at 910, Laura Elliott, 910 Hibiscus Way. I originally lived at 428 Colony Drive. So, I've been through a lot of the development stage, and I've sent you all, maybe not y'all, but the city, pictures of the runoff. It's terrible. The lake they're talking about also is known as Lily Lake. It's, it's not a lake anymore. I mean, it's, it's, it's wrong what's happening over there. And I just hope that you all will look at our whole in situation and know those trees, if they take those trees down, where we built this time, we saved 17 trees on our lot. We put our house sideways, so that we could save trees. If they take all those trees down, we're gonna have major, major, major issues. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Couple more people?
She's gonna beat you.
I'm Carolyn Hupp, and I live at 436 Colony. Previously, I lived at 114 Mulberry, so this is my second house in Battles Trace. We noticed when we first moved, two and a half years ago, to the lakeside, the very first spring we were there, across the lake from us, was uninhabited, trees everywhere. But some development starting, so that lake, that silt, there were no silt fences. Rain started, and you just watched the rain come, just in sheets, down across the berm. We're to the point now, once they started building silt fences, it really didn't help, because it's only a single silt fence. We complained, we worked through Mobile Baykeeper, we reported that to ADEM as well, and we got a work stoppage until they repaired the silt fences. And an environmental person came out and they made a double silt fence and then a hay bale in between. That made a difference. But now, the only silt fences that are there are broken down because the equipment has run over it. It's been there too long, the material is rotten, we've had too many storms, and the dirt is almost to the top of the silt fence. So at the next storm, it's probably gonna erode through again. We had a solid berm on the east side of the lake, and a culvert was put in, and then with rainstorms repeatedly across that area, we've had such erosion that the culvert is now quite open there. Kids have, have gotten to the point that they play right there. It's not a very safe place for those kids to play, because it's, the, the berm is continuing to erode down in there. The berm is probably not very, very safe. So, yes, something needs to happen, we need silt fences, we need them to toe the line on what they're supposed to do to protect our environment. They're not doing it, they're taking down every tree they can. And when you take away trees, you take away absolute power. We don't have it anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Eric Smith, and I live at 18269 Colony Drive, Unit 704. I just wanted to, I live in the towers, the Bayview condominium, two towers. One of the reasons we moved in there, obviously, was the beauty of the, the environment, the area. But as I look at these plans, they are basically blocking us in and building homes all around us. So you have safety concerns, you talk about health and, and safety of the, of the citizens. There are 56 units alone in the Bayview Two Towers. So if you're looking at the ability for fire trucks and things to be able to get and to have access to that building, could be a concern. I'm concerned for my neighbors on that one. But if you look at the last, and I share the same concerns as, as my friends and neighbors, is they are clear-cutting the last three phases. I don't know if you've been there, but they have clear-cut all the trees, they're gone. So this little plan that they're showing you, that's, they're gonna, they're gonna save trees, they will not save the trees, and we will have more, more damage to the lake and to the area. So, thank you for listening, have a great night.
Good evening, I'm Ken Maruzin, and I live at 838 Apricot Lane. Could I ask whether you can go back a couple slides to the picture with the trees on it? There, didn't know that one. There, right there. So the, the tower, the high-rise, you can see clearly. You can also see that small area on the left hand of the right-hand picture, where they're beginning to construct the pickleball courts. But the most important part of this slide are all the trees that are right inside the main entrance to Colony Drive. And there's just, if we could compare that to the left hand, where you see the lots, and where they're going to build houses, they're going to have to strip that again, just like they have with the three most recent phases, and it'll be virtually treeless. Maybe some small trees, but I don't see any plan for green space in, among where those trees were before. So I would ask that you consider seriously having a landscape plan that you can look at before you go ahead with approval for this phase. I also have a question, I've only lived here for four years. The plant diagrams that I was shown included a second high-rise, not homes, in the area of this Phase 8. I don't know at what point in time T1 included the second high-rise and converted into all homes. But I can't speak for everyone here, but I think you can see from the footprint that where the open space is to the right of Colony Drive, that was the approximate location for the second high-rise. And I, for one, would rather have a second high-rise over there and leave all the trees to the left of Colony Drive, so that that whole area is not stripped. Thank you.
I didn't get an answer to the question, I think one of your planners probably remembers when there was a change.
Well, and we'll answer questions at the end after everybody's had a chance to, to air their concerns. Is there anybody else from the public who would, who would like to speak? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Going through my list. Hunter? I mean, some of the concerns that were raised had to do with, with density and, and green space where, you know, I guess stepping back from that, a lot, some of the concerns that were raised really have to do with the developer and the relationship of the homeowners with the developer, and our...
You are absolutely correct. A lot of the things on the list that we've given in the petition, we should not be reviewing here. You know...
Can you clarify what those are, so people understand?
How things were marketed, sold, you know, the, the membership and, and access to facilities and overcrowding of certain amenities, those are things that are a civil issue, not something we should be looking at and judging a project on based on our zoning ordinance and the approvals that have been given. With that said, this project has evolved over quite a few years, and I do believe at one point there was maybe nine towers approved or, or planned.
When it was approved at the county?
Yes, sir. What year was that, approximately?
It would have been somewhere around 2003 or '04.
This has been going on quite some time.
It was approved at, the layout, original layout was approved at the county level.
That's right.
And, and then, that's another whole story, but then it evolved where it is today.
And I think in '07, somewhere '07, '09, it came into the city?
Well, they came, brought it in as a tourist recreation district, is what they did.
And kind of PUD with the tourist resort district.
That's right, but it was, it was all laid out like this, but the, you're right, and they're right, the marketing, you know, the marketing by the hotel or by RSA, that's, that's an issue, but it's not our issue.
Right. The layout here is, is what's approved, like we said, you know, they're, they're, they could actually do more density within the zoning that was given. There are issues, and, and because of the evolution of this, it's, it's sometimes unclear what regulations apply. Some of those regulations from, that I believe we received a copy from, from the design team on a past project, have some tree protection things that are not within our TR District zoning right now. I do, and, and I think a condition is make sure that all of those requirements within, when a PUD or a zoning like this evolves, it can sometimes get a little muddy on what's included, because you're mending things but not overriding everything, and it can sometimes get a little muddy on what is, is approved and isn't. You know, I, I just... You know, I, I just, we looked at some of those languages, like on Battles Road, there's a forty, forty foot tree buffer required, you know. So unless that was overwritten in a amendment between '08 and today, that, that still presides. So, but really the staff's concern here was, so I will say there was an O&M plan, as y'all are all aware, O&M plan to maintain drainage facilities. I believe we just got that one for this azalea recently. And with each phase added, at least a part of Battles Trace, the O&M plan is amended to include the next phase. So we don't have twelve, you know, seven, eight phases out there, you know, every six months having an O&M plan. They'll be reviewing that every three years or five, depending on how that first one.
Depending on how it was written. The O&M is the operation and maintenance plan of the drainage facilities. That's the responsibility of the owner to go out, to hire a team, to inspect it and give a report back to the city. So the maintenance items of any pool, pool of water, pond is always the homeowners association, in this case, the owners RSA are the ones responsible for doing this maintenance and submitting reports. As I said, we've just received it for some other, of the, some other, other developments, not Battles Trace, and we do get those reports every, for this development here is every three years.
Does it address the siltation of the?
It will. I mean, what they, they supply to us is the facilities as designed are operating properly. Sometimes that is, you know, requires remedies before they will sign off on that. So.
Does someone with the city inspect those also?
No. We, we, we send out the notifications that it's due, and a lot of times it's from an engineer that'll produce those reports, sometimes a QCI certified, you know, where a person will review those. You know, it's looking at, okay, is your siltation reduced to drainage? Do you have, you know, vegetative materials that need to be cleared out?
So it's just really looking at, is the capacity, is the volume diminished?
Everything, is your outfall structure has collapsed or some, you know, your, your storm drain's clear, free and clear, inlet's clear. Everything touches.
You know, this was, when this, I, I can tell you from way, way back, this was an 180 acre grown up vacant farmland, once upon a time. And that lake wasn't a lake, it was part of the farm. It was, it was dug. It was dug and developed like that. Now, it was also intended, when RSA bought it from the previous owner, who was Richard Pate, that it would serve as a collection pond and a, for stormwater and things of that nature. And then like with any other stormwater management pond, you got to have, you got to have periodic maintenance of it. And so I'm sure there's, with as much construction that's going on around it, there's gonna be siltation in that thing. Now, what's happened with the O&M reports that y'all get, if nobody's following up, I mean, some guy's probably sitting, could very well be sitting in Montgomery at RSA Tower and signing a report and sending it to, to, to the city every year or whatever. But if there's some, some significant problems, then it, you know, I mean, who's, who's following up?
What recourse do the homeowner, if the homeowner sees problems, can they reach out to the city?
So this is what happens in that sense. We don't have the, the capacity to send people out and checking every drain problem. We do outfall inspections annually as part of our MS four. Kim and Christine do that, work with Public Works. But for private property maintenance, you know, that, that can be a very tough thing because there's a lot, I mean, impervious paving is one, it has to be vacuum cleaned, you know, we can't contest that. So we made sure that there's a certified person inspecting those things. From that point, it's, it's civic issue. I mean, if there's a downstream, we, we notify. Sometimes we have areas that HOA is not activated, you know, or they're dissolved, and there's no one to pay for those, you know, items. You know, that, that can be an issue, but it's a civic issue.
Who would you recommend, just for general principles, who would, who would people that live out there that have issues, who would they contact?
I would, I mean, I would recommend contacting a civil engineer for the inspections, and if you have a chance to get the one that designed it, so they know how it's supposed to work and can tell if it is, is those inspected. And we change those, used to be every three years. Right now, regulations require three years, right after the final plat, three years, and then five years thereafter, every five years. So, you know, that, that's, we, we do have a lot of civil engineers that will do that, provide those services.
Why would you approve new phases?
We've closed, I'm sorry, we've closed the public comment period. So let's be respectful. So, and, and we have covered the fact that actually what they're proposing is less dense than what they are allowed to do by the zoning. I mean, that is the, the trouble. We, we, everybody sees that with each new phase of this development, it's gotten less green and more gray. And I, but that, when it complies with zoning and that happens, that, that becomes an issue between the residents and the developer and whether false promises were made or what, you know, that's an internal issue. We see it. And I'm trying to, one, one question I had is there is this, this tree plan, this tree protection plan that doesn't show that many trees being removed. What, how are they held to this plan?
In, in most subdivisions, the development, the first step of development is going in and putting in infrastructure. That's gonna be your utilities, your road, those sorts of things. It is up to, a lot of times, the, when people build their homes on a live.
And then there's no.
So to save that, but, you know, it, it gives at least that, there is no protection on the individual residential lot of trees. You know, so, but it does at least offer the opportunity for individuals to say, no, I want to tweak this to save that tree.
So the people who, the, the few trees that are shown as being removed in this plan, in some cases I had questions where, one case there's a 52 inch live oak, but they're cutting down three of the little oaks next to it. Now, this is beyond what we're reviewing for, but I, I did question why, you know, why not leave the clump, leave the cluster if that contributes to the character? My, my point was gonna be for residents to hear that it sounds like that the, the clear cutting, if that's happening, that's, that's the individual owners? That this, what's being, what we're looking at is a removal of two, three, four, or it's the home builder who's contracted to build all of them? That's what happens, okay.
And you do see in some of those.
It's not individual, it's one.
Some of those phases, they are more dense. So when they have to go out and clear out the home, there's not room to save a tree to have the homes, and that's in some of the previous phases.
Okay, so what we're seeing, this tree removal plan is not really indicative of what's gonna happen once they start building homes because we don't have anything to protect trees and residential construction in our ordinances.
The tree removal plan is gonna show trees that have to come out for the installation of utilities in the rooms.
Okay.
Now, we do not have the one for the recreational piece, though we do have the, and we do need that. We wanna see how the pickleball's laying out there as far as the use goes. We support that use, those uses. And we also support that what's shown in dark blue on the screen being absorbed into the recreational zone, property of the colony. But, but we need to see that tree and make sure it is meeting all aspects of the zoning as amended through the years, and that can be sometimes a challenge to figure out.
So how are we, we're approving this without, without seeing that, without seeing this last bit, what they're gonna do on it?
You can ask for revisions and be clear about what it is.
But I think the way Mike had it written, well, it's not in here.
I was trying to go back to the.
Flip it back over to the recommendations. It was to the satisfaction of a pre-reviewed and approved by the Planning and Zoning Director for Proposed Future Recreation Area. Well, what we're doing is leaving it up to Hunter.
Yay.
Huh? What?
Yeah.
Okay, so what's, so what's up? Here we go. Lock and load. Madam Chairman. Chairperson, chairwoman.
Yeah, I wish we had more, more that we could do. I'm, I'm out of the business of making motions when I'm, when I'm sitting in this chair.
No, you can't make a motion as chairman, but are we ready? Are you, are you ready for a motion?
I do want, if you do so choose to, to recommend approval with the conditions, that we add some language about the, the ordinance as amended, the zoning as amended, that it meets that. Did we get that in, Mike? I know we talked about Roger then.
That seems really important if there's stormwater protections that are in the layers.
Most of what we were looking at there was about the tree protections and what's required and what's saved. And it gets very specific in some areas of what is.
Okay, buffers.
And I'm not saying that there is a, a thing wrong with this plan. It may meet every bit of that, but when you start pulling in which document is, is applicable and has been amended, it can be a little bit of a challenge to do it in a couple of weeks.
Well, does it make sense to table it until that can be known?
Wait, 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 wait. Is recommendation for, staff recommendation to approve this phase subject to these six?
I was gonna add a couple words to that, into that last six plus seven.
It sounds like maybe we're approving it, but if we find out it doesn't follow some things, then we're not. Does that, I mean, that?
I don't, I, I missed that.
We do not have the tree preservation plans and how the pickleball court will, will fit in. I think we can look at that at staff level and make sure it's meeting the ordinances that's amended, but we just wanna make sure it is.
Number six says provide tree removal and landscape plan to be reviewed and approved by the Planning and Zoning Director for Proposed Future Recreation Area. Is that what we're, you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, then, then it's in there.
Okay, but there's no concerns that the, as amended, changes the tree protection for the remainder of it?
As long as it meets, meets the zoning, that should be, yeah. It is meeting the zoning, so obviously we will not approve it if it doesn't meet zoning, so that's fine. I just wanna be clear for the, for the next thing that we see, that they've done their due diligence in that regard and looked at from the 2008 zoning and what's applicable and making sure that that still meets those guidelines.
Does this language, is that, does that make it conditional, like we're approving based on, approval is conditional on your approval, that it meets?
Yeah, I mean, if we're, we're gonna, we're gonna take a look at that and make sure that, that does, if you so bid.
Yeah, and, and, and it's your purview, so, as the planning commission. So just as a reminder, you can approve this preliminary plat, you can deny for stated reasons, you can approve with conditions, or you can table for further study.
I think we're ready for a motion if nobody else is.
I move we approve SD 22.05 Battles Trace Phase Eight, subject to staff recommendations one through six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? You abstained?
Just to confirm, there was four in the affirmative?
Yes.
Yes.
Who was, who was my?
Give me a roll call, please.
Abstained.
Rebecca, can you do a roll call, please?
Oh, okay. Can we do, can we do a roll call? Just go down, do, we just say what we said?
Yep.
Aye.
Call out the names?
Aye.
Do we have to say our names?
Okay, I'll say the names. Roll call vote, Art Dias.
Yes.
Harry Kohler.
Yes.
John Worsham.
Yes.
Rebecca Bryant.
Yes.
Jason Langley.
I abstained.
Thank you.
Oh, I got it, you abstained.
We might take a second and allow everybody to clear out. Actually, let's keep going. The next, I'm not gonna take a second, I'm just gonna keep going.
Do you need to put them out?
What now?
I got your new name tag, do you need to put them out?
I didn't know you had a new name tag.
So the next item on the agenda of public hearing, consider the request to go Mills and Kaywood on, for the three unit multiple occupancy townhouse condominium project that Mike is gonna explain much clearer than, more clearly.
Just one second, I have to recuse myself since that is my brother sitting back there in the back.
Okay.
So it's up to you four now.
Yes, sir. So again, this is the public hearing, it's a three unit multiple occupancy project. Scott Hutchinson with Gothen Mills and Kaywood is the engineer of record for the project. It's .4 acres and zoned R3TH, high density, single family townhouse residential district. It's located on the east side of South Section Street at the eastern terminus of Gaston Avenue. And it may look familiar to you. Not too long ago, this piece of property came in front of you for a recommendation to city council for a rezoning. It received that rezoning and here we are now for the multiple occupancy project on your screen. You can see it's on Section Street in Gaston, zone that R3TH. On the right is the aerial of the property. There is an existing structure on the site. This will be adding two additional townhomes to this property. The site plan in front of you, the existing dwelling is going to be modified. Some of the southern portion of the house will be removed, allowing the green space and yard in between that building there. Wanted to draw to your attention, and you'll see a little color code on the next side, but the houses, or the townhomes are all rear loaded, entering off of a common drive off of Section Street to the rear of the house, to the garages. There is no parking on Section Street. They will be providing a sidewalk along the front of their property, connecting to the property to the north. Kind of going along with that, the landscape plan, there's going to be additional street trees. There's currently an existing live oak on the southern portion of the property. Three live oaks will be planted in front of those townhomes. The drainage plan, the, the drainage sheet flows, and they've worked and talked with our public works director, Richard Johnson, and there's going to be a pervious paved driveway with a grass median driveway getting back to it for storm runoff. Fairer utilities are available to service the proposed development. A flow model is needed to determine the supply and pressure is adequate to provide fire protection for the proposed development. The location of all utility meters shall be coordinated with each utility department. The drainage, as I said, has been reviewed by public works director, Richard Johnson, and approved. Site will utilize pervious driveway. The street trees and sidewalk installed along Section Street and the landscape plan as shown, on Section Street and the landscape plan shows landscaping along the east and south property lines as well. General comments, the development meets the intent of the R3 townhomes. Each unit has the required rear yard. Each unit is loaded with an internal drive aisle. The proposed development is able to keep and modify the existing house to the north with the, adding the two additional units to the south. Staff's recommendation is approval with the following conditions. One, provide the flow model for the fire hydrant in front of the property to ensure water and supply and pressure is adequate to provide fire protection for the proposed development. Provide a signed O&M agreement before a building permit for the project will be issued, and that the sidewalk and landscaping shall be installed before the issuance of ACO. Behalf of staff, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, the applicant and the engineers with us tonight as well.
Is it possible to, can we do one public hearing for both, or no, you have to do two public hearings?
This is the only case we have on the agenda for this one.
Is it?
We got 412 again.
412 is, is the next case, and that will have to be a public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry. I should have asked that on that one. Okay. Does anybody have questions for Mike? I think we're good. Would the developer like to speak to this?
Good evening. Scott Hutchinson with Gothen Mills and Kaywood, and I'll just answer any questions that you, that you may have, except for Art.
Yeah.
I think the meeting just got shorter.
Who, how did the courtyard?
You want me to recuse myself? You want me to recuse myself more?
You can't say anything.
I think I just answered my own question about the courtyards. There's one per each.
Yes.
I like the, I like the rear-loaded sort of alley access is, is nice.
And those will be permeable pavers in the back.
Cool. So nope. I think we're good. Um, this is the public hearing, right? So will, would you like to open the public hearing? Would anyone in the public like to speak to this issue?
I'm not sure if I'm considered public, I'm the neighbor.
You're absolutely public, so just state your name and your address and-
My name is Justin Reinhardt, I live at 251 South Section Street. Uh, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate venue for this, but we just wanted to, um, contact the, the developer, the architect, and just say that, um, uh, we would prefer, uh, if there was no lighting on the side of the building that faces our property, our bedroom windows are right there at the property line, um, and if it's at, at all possible to eliminate lights, or keep them below the, um, fence level, uh, or, uh, if it's absolutely necessary to have lighting there, uh, that they be amber LEDs, um, to protect against cancer risk, uh, that's very important to us. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have any questions?
Hello?
You're gonna have to come up separately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I guess, I, I heard, uh, Richard Johnson had approved, I guess, water flow and looked into that, and that's really the only thing that I was kinda wondering about was, uh, I know on the other side of, of my property there, the, um, the neighbor, I don't think got a permit or anything, it was years ago, and built a driveway and built it up, and after that, water flows under my house. And I never go out in the rain, or I didn't much, so I didn't notice until, you know, a considerable amount of time had passed. So, I see that it's critical, and I'm seeing settling in my house due to that, and I would just like to be sure that water flow, you know, onto my property is not increased. And, am I, did I hear correctly that there, there has been a, a study on that with, by Richard Johnson, is apparently the authority to approve that?
We'll, we'll pull the, uh, developer back up to speak to that, um, after you.
Okay.
So we, we go through and hear everybody's questions, and then pull them back up.
Well, that's really all, all I've got to say on the matter.
Okay.
Okay? Oh, Michael Reinhardt, uh, 251 South Section Street.
Thank you. Scott, would you like to speak to stormwater?
I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would anybody else in the public like, there's nobody really else, and, okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Uh, sure, on, on the stormwater flow, you saw one picture Hunter had of earlier, um, back.
Back here.
Okay, to the right, um, that, that little picture there, there's, yes, it's a really small site, and the, the stormwater flow direction generally, like you see the little blue arrows, and that, those pervious paved driveway, um, catches that water and, and then lets it soak into the ground there, so it doesn't leave the site, if that makes sense. So, it's a simple little-
So there's a volume calculation down there in the bottom?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, to the bottom right, there's, there's a, just a general stormwater, uh, volume calculation showing that it does, does retain that, that water.
Okay, thank you. Um, I had a question about buffer, we've got residential to residential, do we have any, we don't really have buffer or light, light restrictions, just like, um, clarify that.
I think that can be accommodated. There is some light, would we, we gonna accommodate that lighting with some shield or something, if you think, of course, but if you wanna make a condition, you would-
Don't look at me, I can't.
You ain't doing anything.
No, I mean, that's a valid concern, I mean, of course, you know, you know, there is the opportunity to, to make it right, so I think that's a valid condition.
Yeah, where it gets tricky is ten years down the road, somebody's living there and then sticks up a light.
Well, that's what I was gonna, I have a neighbor who put a security light uphill from us that goes straight into our second-story hallway, that people can do that, but, but we can put, make it a condition of the initial.
That's why they make BB guns.
We, we called the city, we talked about BB guns, yeah. The, the city's like, shown into our hallway, we, we called them and asked about BB guns, and they came back with spray paint, so it was like one step better. Um, okay. Do, does anyone have, uh, a motion or discussion? We have our conditions. I think it's, I'd like to see that one happen.
I move we approve case SD 22.12, South Section Street, townhouses, subject to staff recommendations and the recommendation for lighting, light, I think, steps.
Avoiding light trespass.
Light mitigation.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
An abstain.
Do we need a roll call? Any opposed? So it passes. Okay. Okay, one more item on the agenda.
Casey, it's first presentation.
Oh, so-
Yay, Casey, come on.
No pressure.
I should've given you skyline, pretty first.
Yeah, you understand me tomorrow?
We're, we're all smiling, everybody's happy.
All right. We have the preliminary plat approval for 412 Fairhope Avenue, and Casey's gonna walk us through it.
Yep. Um, so let's see. Um, the summary of the request is, um, on behalf of FST 412 Fairhope LLC for site plan, or, excuse me, for multiple occupancy project approval of 412 Fairhope Avenue, a three-unit multiple occupancy project. Um, SC Civil is the authorization for the project. Um, the subject is zone B2 and is approximately 0.07 acres. Um, it is located on the southern side of Fairhope Avenue and lies east of Section Street. Um, and the site plan case was, uh, reviewed earlier tonight. Um, these are the same slides from earlier, where you can see the location, um, and those were the two, um, options that they presented in terms of preserving the tree, um, which ended up being a condition of approval of the site plan. Um, in terms of the utility review, um, all connections and work in the LDOT right-of-way will require permitting from LDOT. Um, water will connect to existing lines located in the alley behind the building. There are three water meters proposed at the rear of one of the parking spaces. Since cars will be driving over the meters, which might structurally damage them, we recommend relocating the water meters to the perimeter of the rear yards, similar to the gas meters, and both of those are highlighted on the slide. Um, the fire protection line, um, must be separate from the water line, so we request that the plans, um, be revised to show the fire line parallel to the water line, and the final location of the water meter shall be approved by the water superintendent. Um, sewer will be gravity-fed into an existing sanitary sewer manhole to the south of the subject property. The sewer line at 410 Fairhope Avenue might need relocating to stay out of the footer of the building. Relocation of the sewer line at 410 Fairhope Avenue appears to be on private property and will be the responsibility of the applicant to move if needed. Power will be run underground from the building to an existing line located within the alley. Um, gas is available, and all three units will utilize gas. Meters are located at the rear of the building. Um, gas meters are located outside of the parking lanes, um, which were shown previously. Um, telecommunications are provided by AT&amp;T, and trash pickup will be private, um, via three trash cans located within the rear of the building. Um, and traffic study was not required. Um, as for drainage, the developer is proposing to modify the existing neighboring downspouts to adjacent, and the adjacent neighbors' roof to convey stormwater to the existing system located within the alley. Um, onsite, an eight, an eight-inch HDPE roof drain will convey stormwater to the alley. Um, and the landscaping plan was not required for the site. Um, we recommend approval of case SD 2213, 412 Fairhope Avenue. Condition number one is carryover from the site plan approval. Um, the other three, um, or, excuse me, conditions number one and four are a carryover from the site plan approval, and then two and three are, um, concerning the water lines. Um, the three water meter boxes are subject to relocation at the discretion of the water superintendent, and the fire line shall be run separately from the, from the water line. So, and the applicant is here, um, to answer any questions as well.
And, you know what, I know we wrote that, but I think we need to remove condition four, and let that be a condition of the site plan that goes on to council.
Okay.
To have the authority to do that, just to remove the, I'm sorry for not catching that early.
Okay. Anybody have any other?
Let's give, let's give it up, Casey. Oh, no, we're not giving it up for you there.
Yeah.
Great job on your first one. I, I was gonna clap, but earlier I heard we're not supposed to, so, um, the only two, I only had two items, um, and Hunter just mentioned one, I was gonna see if we could remove four and let that be part of what number one is, which is the approval of the site plan. That way, if some other thing comes out of it, um, we don't have to come back just to fix this. Um, so that was the first thing I had, and then on the garbage, um, I'm sorry if there was any confusion, it will be Fairhope Trash Collection, we just provided a place, um, a little nook within the hallway of the building to store those cans versus all the, you're familiar back there, I'm sure, when, when you looked at it, but right now, there's just an alley full of garbage cans, so we just have three places for our tenants to store their trash, and then they'll have to wheel them out on garbage day to the alley. So, other than that, everything else, um, is agreeable.
All right. Any questions for Larry?
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
I'm making a close public hearing.
Do we have, I'm sorry. The, uh, I'll open it up for the public hearing, and I will close the public hearing, because there's no public.
Motion, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Person. I second it here. Uh, case SD 22.13, um, 412 Fairhope LLC, prove that we approve, subject to staff recommendations, staff, uh, conditions one through three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, it passes, approved. We still have old business, but he, he left, Trey was here.
Now Hunter's going to stand his show.
I, I got it for him, I think, uh-
Okay, thanks, Larry.
Stay late, thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Um, so this is Hilltop Subdivision Phase Two, um, it's the eight lots, if you remember, they got preliminary plat, uh, have begun construction but are asking for an extension, we fully support that. One thing that delayed that was a rezoning request. If you recall, they brought the whole project in the city as a PUD, including the commercial use. So, if y'all agree, um, we'd like to support the extension of one year to finish up.
You need a motion?
That was my question too, yes.
Go ahead, Harry, give a motion. Give me, give him another year.
I move to, uh, approve the recommendation of staff regarding the extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes. Okay, do we have to move to adjourn? I never-
I move we adjourn.
All right.
You did, pass.
All in favor, aye. Meeting adjourned.